And we'll go ahead and call to order the committee of the whole meeting for February 14th, 2013. And if we could have roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Seneca.
Here.
The clerk is here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebina.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Manager Cyril.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
Fire Chief Weiss.
Here.
Fire Prevention Director Kaufman.
Here.
Fire Prevention Assistant Director Schultz.
Here.
And Fire Inspector Bresnahan.
Here.
Thank you. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call upon our manager, Ron Cyril, to address a press release that's going to be going out.
I'm actually going to read a press release that we're issuing this evening. As you know, the village has been considering the future status of our loss of home rule. So I have a press release relative to that decision this evening. It reads as follows: "The Village of Westmont has decided to repeal several actions that were taken while the village was under home rule authority. Via referendum last fall, Westmont voters opted to cease home rule in Westmont. The village board hired special counsel Holland and Knight to review the home rule loss impact. With that review now complete, the village board is moving ahead with the following items. The village board plans to act on its March 4th, 2013 regular village board meeting to repeal the village's 2.5 cent per gallon gas tax, which was adopted in May 17, 2012, the village's 1.5 percent sales tax, which was adopted by ordinance September 15, 2008. This will result in estimated revenue decrease of between $2 to $2.3 million." And this is a quote: "Unfortunately, this significant reduction in annual revenues will impact our current village budgeting process," stated Mayor Protem Suzanne Seneca. "In addition, the village's multifamily licensing program and the individual unit inspections adopted by ordinance August 3, 2009 have been preempted by the results of the referendum. And accordingly, the village plans to repeal the multifamily licensing program on March 4, 2013. However, the village will continue to perform common area maintenance inspections along with other fire code and other code compliance inspections of multifamily buildings as authorized for non-home rule communities. The village will return or refund all multifamily licensing payments already received by the village for the 2013 calendar year. Any unresolved violations or citations that may have been issued prior to November 6, 2012 referendum are still valid and will be enforced. The change in home rule status does not affect either the village's use of tax increment financing as an economic development tool, nor preempt, repeal, or otherwise stop the village's legal authority to continue to enforce throughout the village all other non-home rule enacted codes, including but not limited to building, zoning, fire, and other life safety codes. Previously, the village redirected hotel motel tax revenue from its general fund, which is the operating fund, back to the more restrictive hotel motel tax fund. This was effective immediately following voter direction to end home rule. Prior to home rule status, hotel motel tax funds were deposited in this fund. Illinois home rule communities are allowed to use home rule tax funds in its operating fund. The village achieved home rule by exceeding the 25,000 population limit as a result of a 2007 special census. Illinois law automatically gives communities over 25,000 in population home rule authority. In 2007, a special census determined that the village's population had grown to 26,211. As a result of the 2010 decennial census, the village's population dropped to 24,685. This triggered the state law requirement for a November 6, 2012 general election referendum question, asking voters if the village should cease home rule status. And this question was approved by the voters. There are copies of this press release. I don't have them, I don't think, enough for everybody in the room, but the chief just put them down in the back if anybody's interested in a copy of it. This will be going up on our website immediately following the meeting, as soon as I provide it to our IT personnel.
Thank you. And we will move on now to open forum, of which we have two this evening. We have Grace Snyder Kubica.
Good evening. My name is, of course, Grace Snyder Kubica. I've been here before. Thank you, Mr. Cyril, for that summation. That's what I, one of the things I was going to ask for on what the village had decided to do. And where is it, what is it, paper is it going to be published in and when?
The press release? Generally, press releases are sent out to all the papers. I can't predict when they may publish them.
Oh, okay.
It'll be up on our website, though, this evening.
Oh, all right. Very good. I have one other question. Still, nothing has been done on the invoices, though you have repealed it. And with this notice, perhaps you feel that the business is done. But a village operates on a business schedule, i.e., you send out water bills. If you don't get an answer, you send out a second water bill, then you turn off the water. When you send out an invoice, you follow it up when you've decided it's null and void. In addition to the press release, since not everybody reads the paper, nor does everybody go to the website, I still request that all landlords in Westmont, which I understand from something you said, I believe, Mr. Cyril, 51 percent of the housing in Westmont is in multiple family homes, so that would be land, under landlords, I still request that you send a letter to all those people, all of those landlords that you sent the applications to. Thank you very much for your time.
Just for a point of clarification, we will be making a mailing to everybody like we did when the ordinance was enacted.
Thank you.
That wasn't included in the press release, but we will be doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we have Larry Forsberg from the Westmont Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to share a reminder with everyone. On March 11th, the Westmont Chamber will be sponsoring the Westmont Community Awards Dinner. It's going to be held at the Oprah Hills Marriott Resort. We're going to have a 6 o'clock reception, followed by a 7 o'clock dinner, and then an awards program. Included in the awards for that evening will be a special recognition from Mayor Ron. We will have a Business of the Year Award, the Educator of the Year, Public Safety Officer of the Year. We will have the Westmont Citizen of the Year presentation included in that, along with the Westmont Rotary, which is going to be presenting a Paul Harris Award. And we also have the Westmont Special Events presenting their Making Memories Award. So we'll have an action-packed evening, an opportunity to recognize those that make a substantial difference in our community. So I encourage all residents, businesses alike, to come out and join us for that event on March 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to reports. I just have two things. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. I don't know why you'd want to spend it here, but we're glad that you did. And also, I'd like to wish a speedy recovery to a former Citizen of the Year, John Svetak, who has been under the weather and is currently rehabilitating at Manor Care here in Westmont. So he is on the mend, and you will see him back in action very soon. And that's all I have this evening. Clerk?
I wanted to comment on the Chamber's progressive dinner the other night. It was a lot of fun. I ate way too much, way too much. Good thing I had to fast yesterday. I needed to.
It was a good day to have it.
And secondly, I would like to call for an executive session to review, accept, and release executive session minutes for tonight, following the meeting. That's it? That's it.
Thank you. Attorney Zemanek?
I've got nothing tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Manager Cyril?
On the agenda, there's a couple of things that are already stated. Before I go into those, I wanted to mention that the finance ordinance for tonight is $940,824.15. The first item that's on the agenda, the first point, Miller School one-way request that we will not consider this evening, that's going to be postponed or moved into the next set of meetings, so that'll be back for your consideration at the February 28th Committee of the Whole. Next, we have a, an item that was just previously before you involving the Holy Trinity Parade and St. Patrick's Day Parade. They came back to us after the last meeting, and they asked if we, if the board would consider a liquor license fee waiver request. And I know that, and I'm going to talk about a couple of other special events here in a minute, but we have a gentleman here who wants to talk a little bit about that. But that, that request is something that you have waived in the past for other organizations. And given the length of the agenda, we were trying to do some ways to try to keep the agenda a little bit shorter. So that's why we put it under, under my report.
Hello, all. How you doing again? Just wanted to come up and ask, we ask for the fee waivers because we're trying to raise money for the school. And in doing that, trying to involve the community. It's not just strictly a Holy Trinity event. It's for the community, thus why we have the parade going on. With the parade happening, things are looking real good with that. I think we're going to have a good turnout, you know, provided the weather holds up. Talking with Chief Mulhern here, Chief Weiss, the other day, they're really working hard, and we appreciate them getting everything set up with this being our first year. It's nice to have experienced people working along with us and helping it get set. So it's not only just a great event, but a very safe event. EMA, like to thank them, because I know they're going to be helping out, a lot of the volunteers. So Holy Trinity would like to thank them in advance. We have a lot of great stuff going on. I mean, we've got a great community here. We have Uncle Bubbs is involved, and is going to be doing the cooking. We have Tap House Grill is going to be involved in sponsoring and getting involved in the parade as well, too. We have the Westmont Chamber that's helping along, working along with us, special events. So it really is already kind of a community event with a lot of people involved with it. We have the Knights of Columbus, who are really getting a lot of volunteers helping out in any way they can. We're working. We have something that kind of goes a little bit outside of the Holy Trinity Parish, too, is we're doing a sponsor a vet. Anybody that knows a veteran or just wants to buy, you could buy a $15 ticket for a veteran, and it includes a dinner and a beer. And even, again, if you don't know a veteran, to give that ticket to, you could leave it up at the ticket booth. And so if a veteran comes up and shows their ID or proves they were a veteran, they can take that ticket and go get a meal and a beer. So, or a drink if they don't drink beer. So we're kind of reaching out there. We have our St. Baldricks event, so we're going to be doing some head shaving over there. We've already raised in just a couple of days over 1,200 bucks for that. So our goal is $5,000. So anybody interested to come out and shave their heads, Sue, we'd love to have you come out.
I'm all over that one. It'd probably look a lot better.
You know? So, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on. So it's not just even benefiting, again, Holy Trinity, but the St. Baldricks. We are honoring a little girl from Westmont who unfortunately passed away. So this will be done in her honor as well, too. And then, again, the sponsor a vet. We have Fox News Chicago coming out tomorrow to make three live feeds over at the school to talk about the parade, the event, and the St. Baldricks. And we'll actually be live on their morning show at 7:30, 8:30, and 9:45. So again, it's a way to get some, just some people out to Westmont, and then we've got some, you know, news recognition out here. And, and I just really think it helps out. So if you could help us out with a fee waiver, that would just be fantastic.
Thank you.
Have a great evening and happy Valentine's Day.
Thanks, Keith.
Okay, keeping with that theme for a moment, again, because we do have a long agenda, we've got some important issues. Obviously, we've got a number of people here who want to speak on things later in the agenda. I had put two items under the consent agenda, which are things that have been approved in the past. They're special events, and they're exactly the same requests as, as were before you last year. However, and she was correct to point this out, Trustee Klebina contacted me and pointed out, you know, if we just prove them on the consent agenda, we're not going to give an opportunity to promote them. So I said that we would invite representatives from those two organizations to be here this evening if they wanted to get up and just speak a little bit about the, the two events. The first winning question is the, that I'm talking about is the Chicago Prostate Center 5K run, 3K run. And I'm not sure if we did get a representative here. I know we reached out to them to see if they wanted to. If not, I'll just mention that the event is, is planned for Sunday, September 8, 2013. And I believe this event, we've had two or three years now, two years. And the success, success has grown each year. The other item that we have on the consent agenda is the Relay for Life event. And we have Leslie Abernson here from American Cancer Society. Now she wanted to make some comments.
Thank you very much, and happy Valentine's Day to everybody. We have services here for people that are going through cancer treatment. Everyone knows the name American Cancer Society. And we just want people to know that our services are there. They're free. We give free rides to treatment to people who need it, if they have family members that are working and can't get them to treatments. So we're always looking for volunteer drivers, and it's very flexible. So if you just have a few minutes, and you can only go to Good Samaritan or something for 10 minutes, that's a possibility. So we encourage everybody to volunteer for that if they can. We offer prevention programs in the schools, try to get kids to have healthy habits and prevent smoking and sun safety and all these things that we know prevent cancer. So we're trying to stop it before it starts. And we also are raising money to, for groundbreaking research. We now have 48 Nobel Prize-winning scientists on the books who have been funded by our research dollars. And they have been making tremendous strides in making sure that we are reducing the number of deaths from cancer. We're having more and more survivors every year. So it's very hopeful. Cancer used to be a very scary, horrible thing, and it's, it's becoming less so every year because of the efforts of people that raise funds. So to raise money, one of our biggest events is Relay for Life. And it's in 5,200 communities across the country and in 20 countries around the world. And it's a community festival to celebrate cancer survivors, to remember loved ones lost, and to come together as a community and to fight back against cancer. We have a couple of really good teams started from the junior high and the high school. We're hoping that there's going to be a little fun, little cross-the-street competition between the two of them. Everyone's welcome to come. It's for all ages. We have activities for young children. We have things for older people, music, entertainment. We have games. We have some touching ceremonies where we honor the cancer survivors. We have a luminaria ceremony where we write bags, names on bags and light them up with glow sticks when the sun goes down, and we read those names off. But the majority of the event is fun. It's festive. The walking is optional. It's voluntary. So if you have a physical disability or a reason why you just want to sit in a lawn chair, you can do that, too. A great DJ. It's for all ages, and we really encourage the whole community to come out. It is an overnight event, and this is really what we're asking for, is permission, and the paperwork's been filled out, as I understand, permission to make sure that it is okay to have it overnight. We have a terrific professional DJ who's very conscientious. At 11 o'clock, he makes sure that the sound goes down. He actually walks to the edge of the site at Ty Warner Park where we are. And thank you to the Park District who lets us use that space every year. They're wonderful to let us do that. So we're at Ty Warner Park, but he walks to the edge of the space where we're at. He makes sure the music is just loud enough to, for the people to hear it at the edge. And if we get any complaints, he turns it down right away. So we're trying to be very considerate of our neighbors, but mostly, we would love for all the neighbors to be at Relay so that they don't have to worry about the, the sound. But it's a wonderful family event, and we encourage everybody to volunteer if they can. It's great for service hours for high school students. I believe some of the Scott family has participated. And we invite everyone to come. Any questions or?
The date?
That's good to know. May 31st at Ty Warner Park. We're getting, we're having monthly meetings again. Park District, thank you for the use of the space at the community center. The last Tuesday of each month for the next couple of months is going to be meetings of teams and planning committee, 6:00 PM, last Tuesday of the month. There's a website. It's www-relayforlife.org/westmontil. And I live in Westmont. I'm right across the tracks and been there for over 25 years. So if you need to get ahold of me, there's a flyer in the back of the room that's got my contact information on it. And we would love to see the whole town come out for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thanks. That's all I have.
That's all you have? Thank you. Moving on, trustees. Trustee Emery?
I just want to add one thing for the press release, that when it talks about the hotel motel tax funds that will no longer go into the general fund, that's around, did we estimate between $800,000 and $900,000?
We had topped out at $800,000 at one time many years ago, but it's probably more in the range of 600 to 650. Our finance director is here.
No, that's not.
Can't correct me. He's shaking his head yes. So.
Okay.
We had peaked like 2,000, about 2,000 to 800,000.
Well, with the shortage then of the gas tax and the sales tax disappearing, none of us will see a drop in gasoline prices at the pump because they still stay competitive with their, with surrounding towns. And instead of the gas tax then going to us, it will go to the station owners. But the total of close to $3 million is about 10 percent of our budget. And we're coming up into budget talks, and it's going to be extremely difficult. So I will ask people to pay a lot of attention to it. We'll always take suggestions. And if you think 10 percent of $30 million isn't a lot, that will have an impact on a lot of things in this village. It's kind of like equating it to, you, if you work on a household budget of your take-home pay for a year, and now for the next year, you realize there's going to be a month and a half that you're not going to have any income. So if you don't think that's going to be an impact, guess again. So I'm asking the people that live in this town to pay attention to it because we're going to have to make some tough decisions, and we always appreciate input on that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Scott?
I just want to announce that the Westmont High School Athletic Booster Club is going to have a spaghetti dinner tomorrow night at the high school in the Commons. It starts at 4:30 to 7:30. The cost is $7 for adults and $5 for kids, students, and seniors over 60. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Nero?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Trustee Klebina?
I'd just like to add again, a speedy recovery to John. He's duly missed, I'll tell you. It's sad when you see him. He was so weak the last time I saw him. I'm glad he's in for recovery. Also, that I have to agree with Ginny, the Chamber Progressive Dinner was fantastic, and there was no excuse to go home hungry. It was, I can't even figure how they called it an appetizer, because the appetizer was actually an entire dinner. Uncle Bubbs and Lee Fleming, the, oh, Fleming, absolutely delicious, and La La Lee. I mean, they were fantastic. They did a great job. I'm so glad I got a chance to go. And just want to wish everybody a happy, beloved, loving Valentine's.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming?
Just, I just want to kind of echo what Trustee Emery had to say, that I think that the times that have been tough in the past have been very difficult. But what we're faced with now is one that, an operating budget. I can honestly say in my years that I've sat on this board, this is going to be the toughest budget I've ever had to tackle in my life. We've had some tough ones, and the economy's been down. But as a lot of you know, I've been doing this a while. But I can honestly tell you, this is going to be the roughest one that I've seen yet. And as you equate to, 10 percent of a budget is a large chunk of money. So I would suggest the residents of this town who own property in this town and pay property taxes in this town, look at this. Look at the things that you like, that you want to keep, and that you would want to fight for and hold on to. Let us know what those are. But we are going to have to make some extremely, extremely tough decisions on things that used to be that may not be anymore. So with that being said.
Thank you.
Forward and upward, and we'll do the best we can for you because I've lived in this town 28 years. I love this town, and I'm going to continue to stay here. And I will fight for this town and the residents in this town, no matter where I am or what I'm doing. So, that being said, I wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day, and forward we go. Thank you.
And, and just to piggyback one more time on that, and thank you for bringing that up, Trustee Emery, we're also at the mercy of our fine state of Illinois.
Yes.
And, you know, we get our sales tax, our, our shared sales tax probably four or five months behind. I know the schools are behind in receiving their funding from the state. We can only hope that at one time, at one point, it doesn't stop coming, because our state is in dire, dire straits. So we've got a tough year ahead of us. We can assure you, this board's going to work very hard to come up with a budget that works. And hopefully, we will be able to maintain the services that we have in place. But I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility that we will see cuts in services. We will do our best. You have all of our words. We'll do our best to make sure that that doesn't happen. But it is what it is, and it's a lot of money, 10 percent of your budget. Imagine a 10 percent pay cut. Not easy. So with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. The items that were discussed tonight, we will include in the consent agenda on Monday to vote, the ones that presented.
Well, I forgot to ask, is it appropriate to put the Holy Trinity request on the consent agenda?
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay, moving on. Public hearing. Continued public hearing for the Southwestmont Business District TIF. Board to continue to conduct a public hearing for the Southwestmont Business District Tax Increment Financing District on Tuesday, February 19, 2013, at 7:00 PM. So that will be on for Monday, and the public will be invited to speak at that hearing.
Sue, do you want to mention the action that was taken earlier regarding the map reduction, the TIF size? It might be helpful if anyone's here.
Yes, yes. I think, as a lot of people are aware, we've been working very, very seriously with the Mercer School District and with some of the businesses on the south side of 63rd Street. And we've reached an agreement where the TIF will now include the north side of 63rd Street, east and west of Cass, but not the south side. So that is what our hearing will be on, and that's what we will ultimately have as a TIF in that area. And is there anything that Ron or John would like to add to that?
No.
Thank you. Okay, so that will be on for Tuesday, not Monday, sorry, Tuesday. New business. Final plat request. Kyla's Crossing Subdivision, 243 East 56th Street. Board to consider an ordinance approving a final plat of subdivision request from McNaughton Development to split one lot into nine lots of record at 246 East 56th Street. And I see Jill approaching or retrieving.
Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is John Barry. I'm with McNaughton Development. And we're just here tonight for your consideration on our final plan of subdivision for Kyla's Crossing along Oak Avenue. Do you have any questions I could answer for you?
Any questions from the board? Any from the public? Staff, any comments? Pretty cut and dried?
No, this was a, yeah, a nine-lot subdivision, including detention. The Plan Commission recommended approval in September for the preliminary plat, and we are working out final engineering.
Great. Thank you. This will be on for Tuesday. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Greenleaf subdivision. Board to consider an ordinance approving a multi-party agreement for the completion of the subdivision improvements at the Greenleaf subdivision. And we have Michelle and Malik.
Good evening. Thank you. MI Homes is the contract purchaser for the balance of the vacant lots at the Greenleaf subdivision, which was initially started by McNaughton Development. Tonight, we have representatives of MI Homes, as well as Steve Gregory, and we also have Dave Galowich to discuss a multi-party agreement that Attorney Zemanek has been working on to forward the completion of the subdivision improvements. With that, I'll turn it over to John.
Sure. This is something similar, if not nearly identical, to what This is something similar, if not nearly identical, to what the board approved with the residences of Oak Brook Hills when that developer went under, and there were public improvements and some private improvements secured by a letter of credit, that the village seized the letter of credit and worked with a independent developer to get the improved subdivision improvements done. We're doing the same thing in this case. The letter of credit has been turned over by the bank to the village. We have a willing developer, and Stephen Gregory, through his company, who's willing to serve as a construction manager, to oversee the completion of these improvements, which are technically public improvements that were secured by the letter of credit. It's essentially final surface course on the street, wetlands and detention improvements, some landscaping improvements, and a myriad of other related subdivision improvements that will, I think, greatly enhance this subdivision, allow the lots to be more saleable, and we've got, as Shannon mentioned, a contract purchaser who is willing to buy these lots and start developing on them, hopefully. If there are, and I did email the agreement to you this morning, there still may be a little tweaking going on, but we're 99% complete, I believe. If there are any leftover funds after Mr. Gregory does his work to complete the subdivision improvements, the agreement provides that the money would be turned over to the homeowners' association for completion of remaining subdivision-wide private-type improvements, such as some additional common area landscaping, or, again, we've got some wetlands here, there's going to be long-term maintenance of the wetlands, cleaning out detention basins, things like that. And, I don't know, Stephen, if you want to say anything?
Good evening, mayor. Village trustees, if you recall, I appeared before you probably several months ago. I had initially, had worked with Cole Taylor Bank, who held the letter of credit on this project, to complete the remaining public improvements, and had worked with village staff on identifying a punch list, if you will, of what those items were. So this was, seemed to be kind of a natural kind of extension of those efforts that were undertaken last year, and hopefully we can get everything done to the benefit of both the existing residents over there and the future residents, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Anyone from the public? Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Comprehensive plan adoption. Board to consider an ordinance adopting the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations to approve the draft comprehensive plan.
Hello again. This evening, I'm very pleased to indicate that the draft comprehensive plan is before you for consideration of adoption and approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission's favorable recommendation. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted the public hearing and open house on January 9th to go over the draft results, which have been provided in link form and hard copy. Just, I want to take a second before turning things over to our consultants, John Hausel and Devin Levine with Hausel Levine, to summarize some of the extensive work that's gone into this long project. Over a period of nearly two years, we've had an outstanding response from the community, the village of Westmont, residents, business owners, village officials, staff, people from other communities that may be shoppers. Many folks have participated in online surveys, a community mapping tool, various workshops and other events where data and information has been collected to indicate what the vision is for this community over the next 10- to 20-year period. So I wanted to summarize my gratefulness for all of that community involvement. We are very pleased with that result, and the consultants have informed us that our turnout has been very high when compared with many other communities. So that's something to be said for our residents. And with that, I would like to invite John and Devin to the podium to summarize the draft plan and go over any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Board trustees, thank you very much for having us here this evening. It really is, it makes me thrilled to be here this evening, to be able to present to you the draft comprehensive plan for your consideration. Shannon has indicated, there's been a lot of work done by a lot of people over the course of the last year and a half or so. Staff has done a phenomenal job, and I can't thank enough the work that was put in by the steering committee that was formed. The diligence with what they went through, line by line, word for word, image by image of this draft, as it was, has evolved over the last year, has really been remarkable. What we were going to do is, if we can get the...
Can't tell you my password.
AV working, I won't look. It's just for your benefit and those who may be watching, go through a year and a half worth of work in about five minutes, if you'll bear with me, so. I talk fast, even when I'm trying not to. Now that I'm trying to, it may be more than you can bear, so. Do your best. But I just want to sort of get it on the record and get it out there. But it really has been a remarkable process, and the level of involvement has been really something to be a part of, and we're really proud of it. The comprehensive plan is divided into several different chapters, and now again, I will go through just the essence of the framework of the plan, again, literally within a few minutes, just so everybody sort of knows what it is that we've been working on and what it is your community has produced. So here's what the cover of the comprehensive plan looks like. Again, the comprehensive plan really should serve as a foundation for decision-making. It is a long-range plan for the next 10, 15, to 20 years. It is not regulatory-like zoning, but it is a policy document and a guide by which staff, the Plan Commission, elected officials, developers, and residents can all be working off the same playbook as they consider investments, as they consider capital improvements, as they consider policy decisions, and respond to development that may come forward with regard to growth and economic development over the course of the next years. The different chapters that are broken down, there was introduction, a community outreach summary of everything that we've done, the vision for the comprehensive plan, detailed goals and objectives, a land use plan, residential areas plan, commercial areas plan, subareas, community facilities, parks, open space, and environmental features, transportation and mobility, and then a detailed implementation matrix. The first chapter, or chapter number two, talks about community outreach. It provides in detail a summation of all the feedback and participation we heard from all the different stakeholders over the course of the year and a half. Residents, business owners, stakeholders, the steering committee, do-it-yourself kits, online participation, just a whole host of key person interviews, and so on and so on. In this chapter, we summarize every single thing that we heard, break it down by event that was held, and really begin to summarize the key areas of concern that residents flagged as being most important to them. Chapter number three is a vision statement. These are aspirational statements. We address the character of neighborhoods, the essence of revitalizing the commercial areas, and to maintain high-quality village services and amenities for its residences, and a host of other things. It's a visionary statement. It sort of projects the village out over 10 years, and articulates a vision for the village 10 years from today. And that's reflective of some visioning workshops that we conducted with residents. Chapter four is a section detailing detailed goals and objectives, and for the following categories: residential areas, commercial areas, industrial and office areas, transportation and circulation, infrastructure and development, community facilities, parks, open space, environmental features, community image and identity, economic development, and village services and administration. For each one of these categories, a series of detailed goals and then objectives were created to give sort of, again, a playbook, or the more detailed delineation of what is to be achieved. Chapter five is a land use plan. We go into a detailed characteristics of all the different types of land use throughout all areas of the village. The beginning of this stage was to map existing land use, so if somebody looks at this five years from now, they can see what was on the ground the time the plan was created. Over the course of the year and a half, what evolved was a land use plan, which is what you see, this proposed land use plan in this figure. Light yellow is residential, purple is industrial, green is open space, red is commercial, sort of a light tan color is single-family attached townhouses, row houses. The brown color is multifamily. We then break it up into subsequent chapters or sections, identifying just the residential strategies that you see before you. We do the same thing then for all the villages' commercial areas and business areas, and then we break it down into detailed subarea plans. In addition to the village-wide plans, four detailed subarea plans were created. A subarea plan for Ogden Avenue, a subarea plan for Naperville and Cass, a subarea plan for the downtown, and a subarea plan for 63rd and Cass. For each one of these four subareas, we created overall character districts within each one of these areas, defining the character of improvement and use within each one. Ogden Avenue spreads over two different sheets, because it was a little bit longer. We then come back and look at the specific land use and development in each one of those character areas, delineating out with footprints and areas as to what type of development should take place in each of them. We then come back with transportation and urban design recommendations for gateways, closing of, or consolidating curb cuts, improving cross-axis, wayfinding signage, landscaping, lighting, you name it. It's framed out in the next two graphics, transportation and urban design improvements to improve the aesthetics of these corridors. That was for Ogden. These are for the other areas. This is Naperville and Cass, same series of graphics. It's a lot of accompanying text that I'm not going through. We do the same thing then for the downtown area. We then do the same thing for 63rd and Cass. Same sequence. Character, land use and development, transportation and circulation recommendations, and urban design and character recommendations. And then for 63rd and Cass, we also did some visualization to show what the development could look like in the area on the northwest corner of Cass and 63rd is what this image is you see here. And we delineate out specifically one concept for how that could come online. We then go into community facilities. Community facilities are those things that contribute so much to quality of life, but they're not privately held. The city facilities, the government facilities, the school facilities, the parks, the churches, those things that are quasi-public or public in nature. We identify all of them and discuss them. One of the things to point out in this graphic, you'll see those four yellow areas, you'll see a couple, actually five, yellow framed-out areas with a yellow line. Those are potential locations for a new public works facility. We found out what the criteria was for the development of such a facility. There was no singular site that fit the bill individually that stood out, so identified the five areas that we thought were the most likely candidates working with public works. Just to clarify, the Ty Warner Park area on the north end, you see a big rectangle around that. That is not to indicate Ty Warner Park is up for consideration of a public works facility, but some of the properties across the street from it. So we had to clarify that at the public hearing, there was a couple of people who showed up thinking, for that one reason, thinking that's what we were proposing. When we clarified it, they laughed and smiled, and they left. So, but that was just to clarify what that symbol is up there. We did the same thing for parks, open space, and environmental features. Again, we understand that the park district runs a lot of its own programs and shows. We're not trying to intervene in a lot of these things. Ty Warner Park, I've got to tell you, is one of those amazing park facilities in the region. It really is remarkable, and I don't think I need to tell you what an asset it is to have a facility of that quality here. It really is remarkable, so. But this map shows all those different facilities and discusses them in detail with recommendations for enhancement and cooperative use of those in this chapter. The next chapter is transportation recommendations. Again, I'm just highlighting the graphics. There's several pages of text that accompany all of these in these chapters. But we talk about transit, we talk about improving pedestrian and bicycle mobility, we talk about improving access on Ogden and Cass, controlling management of access to begin to improve the mobility for both cars, bicycles, and pedestrians throughout all areas of the village. And again, all the detail is on that, but it reflects all of those different types of modes of travel. The last chapter, chapter 12, I just blew through 11 chapters of a document. Chapter 12 is implementation, and this really lays out sort of what to do once the plan is adopted, because adopting the plan isn't like, phew, we're done, you know? Two years of work, we're finished. It's just the beginning. And when you begin to do things like address the very difficult budget decisions you have in front of you, and I've worked for municipalities on your side, I know what that is like. But now you will have a document over the course of the next several years or decade that you can begin to get a sense of what the community would like you to prioritize in terms of capital improvements and expenditures and administrative actions, and what is most important to them, we think we have put in place in this document. And the implementation chapter begins to lay out the sequence of what it is the village needs to do over the decade to begin to realize the recommendations that are visualized in this document. So again, that is about 100 pages of text in a couple of minutes, but I wanted to get out there, we can answer any questions you have, but we do quite a few of these, and the process and the experience of working with this community was really remarkable. So as elected officials representing the residents, hats off to the residents, because they really stepped up and participated, and it was their feedback that was the foundation for the development of this document from the very beginning. So to the residents and the steering committee, they're really to be commended. So with that, we can open it up for any questions that the board may have.
And what you guys do, you do it well. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other board members? I think you... Anybody from the public?
We're just sitting here like this.
Nice job.
Yeah. We're free-hos.
I think we've been through it so many times that everything's already been answered, and you guys did a great job.
Sure did. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
The way this is worded on the agenda is to approve the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. With your permission, I'm going to modify that to approve the 2012 comprehensive plan. Yes, it's recommended by the Plan Commission, but the way it's worded, it seems like you're just approving the recommendation and not necessarily approving the plan itself, so.
Okay.
Good idea.
Good. Thank you. Moving on. Class IV liquor license, Safran Restaurant. Board to consider an ordinance increasing the number of available for, class IV liquor licenses by one to accommodate a liquor license request from Akaguchi Incorporated Doing Businesses Safran. I apologize for that.
You said it well.
Safran Restaurant located at 6200 South Cass Avenue in Westmont. Thank you.
Good evening. How are you guys doing?
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Roy. Mrs. Roy is in the gallery, but unwilling to stand up at the podium. Very simple request tonight for Safran. Safran has been operating in Westmont for many years. They're changing locations from 6020 South Cass to 6200 South Cass in the strip mall with Westbrook Market. So this is a request to increase the number of class IV liquor licenses by one to accommodate their change in location. They're going from an all liquor, liquor license to a beer and wine-only liquor license, and they're also going to get a, they'll be our second BYOB.
Oh, great.
So next January, we can talk about that.
Very good. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question for the attorney. At what point then would we decrease the class that they're surrendering or not going to have anymore?
We have to, so that's...
So when will we do that?
We'll do that on the next four meetings.
So that'll be with us? All at once?
Well, we can, you know, John, I don't know if we can do that all at once, or if I should do that for the next set of meetings, to reduce the, I think they had a class three...
One or two?
Two. They had a two before, so we have to reduce the number of class twos since that one's out there.
So I prefer to do it the next set of meetings. I would like the liquor commissioner to be able to give the applicant a license for this class, and then...
Nothing kind of slips through.
Yeah. Because there is, even though this board makes a license available, it's up to the local liquor commissioner to actually grant the license, and just to make sure there are no problems.
Perfect.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
But look at your new location, your parking lot is always full, so now you'll be filling that parking lot.
I guess so. Keeping my fingers crossed.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so very much. Thank you once again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Class 19 theater liquor license creation. Board to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 2, retail licenses of the village code of ordinances to allow for the creation of a class 19 theater liquor license.
Okay, so for the next two, both the 19 and the 20, for the audience at home, we are creating the framework for projects that are currently in development for new business in town. And so for the theater and subsequently the brewery, we have to create these two classifications. So we'll talk about class 19 first. Class 19 is a theater, framework for the theater. It's an all liquor license, and this is a concept that's been vetted through several meetings, including economic development, planning and zoning, and then a community meeting, which would have an impact on the project for Westmont Theater. Taking all those things into consideration, we created the framework for this theater Some of the, you know, as the theater concept evolves, this is a primary function. The theater is, the entertainment is the primary, the liquor is the secondary, which is the opposite of what we currently have with establishments that have a primary restaurant or a bar and have live entertainment, you know, occasionally. So this is a primary live entertainment function. Some of the highlights and taking into consideration some of the concerns of citizens and staff, we built into the classification, which include that no alcohol will be served where the entertainment is primarily directed toward children primarily, but it's under 21, so we know, so like a high school battle of the bands, you know, where you have 17, 18-year-olds, there will be no liquor allowed to be served. year olds, there will be no liquor allowed to be served. For situations where the theater is rented, there is no more than six continuous hours of liquor sales. And finally, we have a limitation on when we can serve the alcohol, being an hour before performance, during the performance, during intermission, and then one hour after the performance ends. So one hour after the music stops, liquor stops, and for all intents and purposes, the venue will be closed. Having said all that, in addition to what we built into the theater classification, because it's a live entertainment venue, we still have rules in the liquor, in Chapter 10, under Section 35, which is live entertainment, which grants the liquor commissioner additional safeguards for making sure that the place doesn't get out of hand. The, and then finally, for fees, we were going to charge $3,000 for the initial application and $3,000 for the annual fee. The closest thing that we can, we have for a comparable on our liquor license is a class one, and it goes to the seating capacity, which a class one is all liquor with a seating capacity of over 200 people. This is a venue that will hold a maximum of 300 people. It's an all liquor establishment, so we felt for staff that we thought that would be fair.
Reasonable. Great.
Any questions?
Questions? Anyone?
Attorney Semenek.
Thank you. So Anne Marie worked with you to draft this, and I just have some questions about kind of the definition of the venue that this, that's eligible for this license. Because it says, it, first of all, it says, "This license is for where the major and primary business is that of a theater," which is defined as a facility within the B1 central business district. So I like the idea that it's limited to the B1 district because that kind of coincides with the at least one development that you approved already. But it uses the word theater where when referring to at least the 11 West Quincy Street operation, we referred to that as like a performing arts venue or performing arts center because they weren't showing movies. This allows for, you know, the business is that of a theater, allowed as permitted use, and those are special uses, so I think we need to change that.
Okay. On the moving, on the motion picture part of it, and talking to the people that are developing the Westmont Theater, they wanted it to be obviously as open as they could possibly make it, and we discussed moving picture shows for viewing on special occasions. So if they wanted to do, show a classic movie in conjunction with holidays, or if they wanted to show a movie throughout the year for one of the, as a permitted use or as a function of the theater, that we leave that language in there. So it does kind of jump out as saying, it almost feels like it's 50/50, like it's half the time it's a theater, half the time it's live entertainment. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, the way it's defined is the primary business is that of a theater regularly used for showing motion pictures slash films or conducting theatrical, musical, or live performances or events. So maybe everyone's fine with a motion picture theater serving alcohol and some do, but I think that should be considered if that's the intention.
Shouldn't it almost be backwards, the other way around?
It should be.
Where the motion picture theater is ancillary.
Sort of a secondary use.
Because this is the first, at least I'm hearing, that they were going to run motion pictures.
I've never heard that in any part of discussions.
The primary use is entertainment.
I specifically asked them whether they would want to consider something like that as a way to generate revenue because there are brewing views and things like that downtown in Chicago, and they said, no, we don't have the money to invest in the equipment that it takes to show movies. So, but it could be in their long range plans, I don't know.
Well, why don't, I mean, what they came in asking for was a performing arts venue, that it should be a liquor license geared toward performing arts rather than what they may want to do down the road if they come up with, you know, the money to buy the equipment. But I think what we went through extensive discussions about and what we were, conditions under which the liquor license was going to be granted or considered to be granted, that is how it should read, in my opinion.
Right. It's really for, if you're okay with this, for when live entertainment is being performed. However, with the special use permit for 11 West Quincy, we also allowed alcohol to be served when it's rented out for like private business events. So I assume you want to build that in there too, because that's like an ancillary use when.
Right. I mean, I think for class 19 liquor license, it's going to be so specialized as to be, you know, some, it would be a miracle if somebody came in for a second one because it's going to be tailored to this one, sort of like our Westmont Yard. It's tailored to this business. So I think it should reflect that.
And if a movie theater were to open downtown and they wanted consideration, then I, you know, this could be amended if the board was inclined.
Yeah, but John, couldn't he, couldn't they just show movies anyhow, and they don't need permission for that in this kind of a venue?
But they can't serve alcohol during movies because the special use, at least at this point, does not permit that. And I think we should spell out in this ordinance that it's only when there are either one, live entertainment that's being performed, not catered to minors, or two, it's contracted out for private functions such as business meetings.
Right. Well, the applicant's here, why don't we ask him what his intentions are?
Well, the other side of this too is that, you know, when this whole project was presented to us, it was presented as a live performing arts, and then asking us also if they could rent it out for special meetings and that. What kind of, I don't like the after the fact scenarios of now we want to put a theater scenario into this. You know, that's, that's fine, but if that's what you have in mind going into something, then lay it all out on the table at the same time.
And we'll say this, it may not have been the applicant who suggested the movie, the motion picture theater part of this. In talking to Anne Marie, I got the intention that staff kind of worked on that language.
And I remember early on myself asking the question if perhaps that venue could be used at holidays to show Polar Express or to show, you know, or maybe the Frozen Film Festival that's coming up here, you know, that might, so I know I asked that question early on if there would ever be an opportunity for a movie, but I wasn't thinking like you're going to come and watch Skyfall in Westmont, you know? I was thinking more.
Want to clear that up, Keith?
Why not? Why not?
I think our only intent was to leave it open that if in the future, you know, the one idea was at the end of the holidays parade, you know, the parade ends pretty close to there, kind of turn down the street, open the door, people come in, have a, you know, just have a relaxing environment and watch a classic Christmas film, something like that. It's, it's really not, I mean, it's more like the half a percent than the, you know, what we expect to be, the, you know, the entertainment almost all the time. It was just a question that we talked about on the phone is, you know, would you ever see a circumstance where you would like to do that? Well, sure. I mean, if we, if we could in the future. And again, it's not, we don't have equipment for that now, so it's not something we would do upon opening. If it's, if it's a point of contention at all, showing a film and, you know, having a beer or something, I mean, we can take it completely off the table, it's up to you.
I mean, I don't have a problem with you showing a film, but no alcohol.
Well, I don't know, I like going down to the Hollywood Boulevard.
Yeah, that's kind of nice, isn't it?
Going to dinner and a drink, that's been fun.
I understand, I understand that. But, yeah, I mean, you want to show a movie periodically, that's fine, but.
It's not the primary use at this time.
Yeah.
You know, sort of a secondary.
If he gets the equipment, can't he just revisit it at that time?
Sure. Absolutely. Sure. You know.
It'd be great if you did that, though.
I mean, this is one of those you got to crawl a little bit before you walk and run. I mean, this is, this is a new thing, so you kind of have to gear it towards what you kind of laid out as your initial view and vision that you want to accomplish here and go down that path. If we need to, or future boards need to amend it as they go along, then that's what they do. But we have to zero on in particular ordinance, especially when you get into the liquor ordinances, to pretty well define it as tight as you possibly can, not with something, well, maybe if we did this, we could still have this or whatever. I would think it's a case that maybe down the road, sure, it's not a problem, it can be something to be considered. But I mean, right now, the serving, the serving alcohol with a movie right now, I would say I wouldn't be in favor of it. Maybe down the road, sure. But I mean, like I say, if you want to show a movie and, I mean, have pop or something like that or whatever, you know, I mean, that's fine. But I think it, I think part of this needs to get rolling first and then come in on the other side of it.
Get the equipment and come back to the board.
Sure.
Okay, John? Anybody else?
Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you for the direction.
Thank you, Keith.
No more questions from the attorney.
No more questions. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this? Okay, great. Okay, we will move on to your next liquor license. You have been a busy deputy liquor commissioner these days.
Yes.
Class 20 brewery liquor license creation. Board to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 10 alcoholic beverages, Article 2 retail licenses of the village code of ordinances to allow for the creation of a class 20 brewery liquor license.
Okay, in the same spirit, we are creating a.
No pun intended.
You like that? Just came up with that one, that was good. Creating a framework for a brewery which would allow for the manufacture of craft beer and the retail sale of that craft beer, both on premise and off premise. In the retail on premise, it would have what is referred to as a tasting room, and there are specific limitations to that tasting room for on premise consumption. Just highlighting a couple of them, limitations are that one customer for one visit per day is allowed a maximum of three 16 ounce glasses of craft beer, three 12 ounce bottles of craft beer, or a flight, which is for four ounce tastings of craft beer for the palate. So if you want one of four beers, then you're going to have that. So there will be seating at a bar area and at four high top tables within the tasting room. The tasting room cannot consist of more than 25% of the total floor area of the entire square footage. Many questions so far?
So they're not going to have a regular bar?
It's just going to.
Define regular bar.
Bar restaurant, you know, I.
No, it's going to.
I'm a big fan of craft breweries, and every one of them has a bar restaurant, and it's a huge profit center.
Yeah.
Or can be. So I, this looks like it's just a very small tasting area.
Say stripped down, yeah.
Which you'd see with like, you know, a Scotch factory or something, or a.
Yeah, this is like a.
It's unique in that sense.
But upon wild success, they could come back.
Yeah, we visited a comparable out in Naperville and, you know, to get an idea of it, it is essentially a stripped down bar. It looks like a bar, but, you know, you don't see bottles of alcohol everywhere. It's basically, you know, the.
A couple taps.
Steve, you could probably, trustee Nero, you could.
Just a couple taps and that's it.
So, yeah, but it looks like a bar, but it's very scaled, scaled down. And you can see the manufacturing process of the craft beer go on, you know, over a partition as they worked.
And they cut you off really early, apparently.
Are there tours? Like, is it, like they teach you about the brewing process and tours, and then you do your tastings and?
Yeah, we did the, we, the staff and I.
I'll bet.
Minus the tasting.
Yeah, road trip.
Terrible, but we walked in completely unannounced, and we got about an hour, hours worth of education on the whole process from start to finish. But no tasting.
No tasting.
No. So, welcome.
Did you get a rain check?
Yeah. Put my name on the board in chalk. Come back later. So the fee that we established was $2,000 for the initial fee and $1,500 thereafter, which is at or a little bit below the average of comparables in the area.
Comparables on size, seating size?
Comparables are a moving target. There are a lot of variables in any liquor classification.
I mean, because this, if this is just the, you know, a tasting room and it's, you know, the time spent in there is minimal, I don't think it should be the same fee for what somebody who has a comparable sized bar that's open all the time.
But they are a manufacturer onsite.
And retail sales.
So the, I have a sack of comparables.
Well, if you're okay with it, I'll go on.
Yeah, there was much on the fee.
Yeah, I know, you've done the legwork on it, so I'll.
Thanks, Tom.
I'll go with staff's opinion. Thank you for not approaching the board when you have a handout.
I know the rules. Unless you look bored, if you want to give them a job.
Thank you for having your assistant pass those out, by the way.
Yeah, I'll pay for that tomorrow.
Or wait, I mean your boss.
Yeah.
Where's Westmont?
It should be at the top. And I did not type this.
Okay, I'm just curious because it's spelled wrong.
We were a little worried.
That's why I said I didn't type it. I apologize for that. So, any other questions?
No, thank you. Thanks for all your work on it. Anybody from the public have anything on that? Okay, we shall move ahead then.
Okay.
Sprinkler ordinance review. Board to review the recommendations of the Westmont Fire Department, review the installation requirements of the fire and safety systems as they relate to the Westmont Code of Ordinances. And we have our esteemed fire department here to present.
Mayoral Temp Seneca Board, want to thank you for allowing us to come in front of you tonight and my staff to talk about this important topic. And, you know, this, before we get started, we have a lot of information that we're going to present to you tonight, and we're going to do it as fast as we can, but it's important to us, and it's important that the board realize the information that we are giving you is, relates to this topic. Before we get started, though, I wanted to let the board know and the building owners and the businesses know that I do have three representatives in the audience tonight from the Illinois Fire Sprinkler Association, Illinois Fire Inspectors, and from NARCOM. If there's any specific questions the board or the building owners want to ask those, those representatives, this is asked, and they'll come to the podium and answering questions they have. So with that, I'll turn it over to my bureau director, Larry Kaufman, and we'll move through this and answer any questions they have at the end.
Thank you.
Good evening. As Chief White said, I think in an effort to kind of move this along, we'll save all the questions for afterwards, so I think that'll be the best. We'd like to give everyone a little bit of education quickly about fire and the reality of what fire can do. Building fire starts, it can be a devastating event, obviously, and it really happens faster than most people think. Everyone has this myth that there's no fires in residential property and non-residential properties, but they do occur, and they actually occur on a daily basis. If you just watch the news, you can see them happening all over the country, if not the world. These fires have obvious impacts on communities and their long lasting impacts at that. Fires spread fast and they cause lasting damage. The best thing to do is to prevent fires. Preventing fires can be done through a number of known technologies that have been around for many, many years, and they're proven technologies that save lives and protect properties. I think one of the important facts we live with by the fire service is that medium developing fire doubles in size every 60 seconds. So regardless of how good your response is, by the time the fire is noticed and gets going, it's usually pretty big in size. And that's why quick notification, quick recognition, and quick response is so important. Oops. I got it back up, excuse me. This quick, quick developing fire can cause rooms to become untenable very quickly. And untenable basically means that you're not going to live in there very, very long. It's 60 seconds doubling in size every minute. Within two minutes, your room can be a place where you cannot live as a human being anymore. So every second does actually count when it comes to fire, fire detection and fire suppression. And the faster it gets detected, the faster it's suppressed, the more lives that can be saved and the better property will be protected. These are some statistics I got from the National Fire, National Fire Academy or the NFPA. These are all non-residential properties. If you look at strictly residential structures, these numbers are higher, obviously, but there's 84,900 fires in 2010. Those numbers are pretty much the same going across the board in 2012. There are 80 deaths, over 1,300 injuries, and you can see a large, large number, dollar amount loss for property and businesses. The one-third of these fires are unintentionally set. The reason I think that's an important statistic is that regardless of how prudent and safety-conscious you are as a business owner, your next-door neighbor might not be, and that could cause you the problem that you didn't even know could exist in your property. They're nothing to do with you. It could be an existing electrical system you had nothing to do with. They're unintentional. That's one-third of all fires. Fires do have a lasting impact on communities, so as not to go into each of these too much, I think that as a whole, you need to look at what these impacts are. Obviously, economic impacts have a high impact on these communities. I think the important note to factor at the bottom there were 70% of all small businesses that interrupted operations will never reopen again. Fire and any type of matter, whether it's residential or non-residential, is a devastating effect. Usually, the insurance doesn't cover it enough, and it could be the end of those operations. There's legal impact. There's civil litigation against fire departments, against villages. Again, if you look at the news every day, this is always going on. It's not really anything new. Building owners can pursue litigation if they feel the tenants are responsible. So even as a building owner, you may have no control over what your tenants are doing in that property, and they're affecting your capital investment. Regardless of the underlying reason, litigation can result in obviously more substantial financial costs. And it could be to the village, it can be to the business owner, it could be to all parties that are involved with what a structure fire brings to it. There's a psychological impact. Obviously, if you look at some of the communities in this country right now, they have been devastated just through the economy, where you have empty lots, you have vacant buildings. Obviously, a fire can create just that. And psychologically, I saw your development plan that just came up, it could put that to a stop immediately with a large fire, even a small fire. Because if you've seen these buildings that start on fire, a lot of times they'll remain boarded up and burnt out as investigations go on, as litigation continues, it just doesn't go away that fast. In many cases, the buildings are demolished and they turn into parking lots, and there's a couple examples there. Chief can speak of those a little better than I can, but that has happened here in Westmont, right here. There's a political impact through lots of housing units, property taxes, sales tax revenues. Anytime you lose a business, it's going to impact the community, okay? They result in a deterioration of the areas in the neighborhood, again, just contrary to what I think this village is trying to strive for. Fire alarm systems are something that is a real good way to start talking about fire life safety systems. I think it's important that we implore that this is never going to be a replacement for a sprinkler system, okay? Statistics show that the odds of dying in a fire that's protected by a fire alarm system are less than 20%, but if it's protected by a sprinkler system and a fire alarm system, your probability of dying in that building is virtually zero. That's how important these systems are. Fire alarm systems will quickly detect the fires. They're proven technologies, they've been around for a while. As technology gets better, they get better and more reliable, and they allow for early response, which if you go back to what we talked about with the development of fire is so crucial. The approximate cost of fire alarm systems is about $1 to $2.50 per square foot. You know, it's a fraction of what most of the other parts of a building cost. If you look at countering and decorating, it just doesn't come to that much. 88% of Westmont properties which are required to have fire alarms are already protected. So this town has been very progressive, and I applaud you on that. Required the installation of alarm systems has been an ongoing goal of the village, and our eventual goal is to have all these buildings fire alarmed, protected by fire alarms. You can't ask for anything more than that. Early notifications so we can get there and put the fire out. Preventing fires, protecting life and property is our primary objective, and this really falls in line with those objectives. Automatic fire alarm system installation applies to commercial, industrial, multifamily, and mixed use. Systems include the detectors. It's hard to show you an example in this building because it's sprinkled, so you're not going to see the detectors in here, but you can see notification devices, which are that strobe horn strobe right there. Pole stations, there are probably none here, but there might be some by the elevator. Those are the things that kids pull at schools, and they shouldn't. And this is due by June 2013, per adopted ordinance. The initial information was given to business owners four years ago, and there's a four-year window to comply. Again, the benefits of a fire alarm system is the early warning, allows most occupants to evacuate safely, and it provides faster response by the fire department. The quicker we know about it, the quicker we can get there and put the fire out. This right here is just a pie chart, obviously, trying to show what we're looking at here. Of the 654 properties, 88% of them are approximately compliant right now. So blue has fire protection, red does not. And then we further broke this down into the downtown district. So of the 80 properties that lack fire alarm systems in Westmont, 39 of those are in the actual downtown B1 district. And you can see that approximately 49% of them are not protected by fire alarms at this This map's hard to see, there's handouts available on the back. The red, this is the downtown district, and the properties highlighted in the red indicate the properties that currently, or the lots that currently don't have any type of fire protection, whether it be sprinkler systems or fire alarm systems. And then the next slide or the next page in that is the blue properties, shows properties that have some sort of protection, whether it be sprinklers, fire, or fire alarms. Wireless monitoring is the method by which these fire alarms are supervised, okay? It applies to all buildings that are required to have fire alarm systems or automatic sprinklers. The idea is that there's a fire there and a sprinkler head activates, or a fire alarm system activates, we have to be able to know that something happens, and wireless monitoring is the ability to let us do that. The monitoring is done directly by our Westmont Dispatch Center, so we're quickly notified, and we can quickly get rigs moving. And again, like the fire alarm ordinance, this is due by June of this year, and there was a four-year window notification to comply with that. What's nice about going next directly to our Westmont Dispatch is it reduces the time to receive alarms and dispatch the fire department. It eliminates all the false alarms, which have in the past been a real problem for us. When fire alarms were monitored by phone lines, most of the trouble alarms were actually caused by the phone lines. This has virtually eliminated those trouble alarms. Reduces property and business owner costs for alarm monitoring. I know the village went through great extent to negotiate this contract and make sure that it was cost beneficial to people using it. And it also generates a small amount of revenue for the village itself. And I already covered this, in the past, the phone lines were such a problem. They just caused terrible problems. We were always going on trouble alarms because of these phone lines. Obviously, the faster response, the fire alarm signal sent directly to our dispatch, as opposed to a wireless signal that doesn't go directly to Westmont Dispatch. So you could have a wireless signal still that goes to a third-party contractor, which then contacts Westmont Dispatch. The issue with this is, is you're not getting any benefit of having the wireless and directly to dispatch. You could be adding minutes to the actual response time, because that center has to get the signal, and then they have to have protocol to call our dispatch center to dispatch us. It definitely adds minutes to it. It just, it doesn't give any benefit any longer, there's no point in it. Compared to phone line monitoring, wireless is much more expensive. You're eliminating that exclusive phone line that you used to have. When you had the phone lines monitoring it, you had one phone line exclusive for the fire alarm system. Currently, our rate is $55 a month to monitor alarms. Of more importance is, because it's constantly being monitored wirelessly, if there's problems with the fire alarm, the owner is notified immediately, we're notified immediately, so the building is never not protected. It's always been protected. And if there's a problem with the fire alarm system, we can get things moving to get it fixed again. This paragraph, or this pie chart, I'm sorry, shows that 67% of all businesses in Westmont have already complied with this wireless requirement. So there's 654 protected properties, and there's approximately a quarter of them still are going to need to get right up to the wireless requirement that we had. Sprinkler systems are required in this town for new construction. There is ordinance in town also regarding certain triggers which will require buildings to be sprinkled. And I know there's a fair amount of confusion regarding how there's a split between fire alarm systems, sprinkler systems, and wireless monitoring. Each of those three entities have really very little to do with each other. The sprinkler moratorium in the downtown B1 district is set to expire at June 2013. We talked a little bit about benefits of sprinkler systems. As a fireman, I can't implore on you how important sprinkler systems are. A sprinkler is going to put a fire out before we can ever get there. It's always been a proven lifesaver and a proven property protector. A majority of fires are controlled with less than three sprinkler heads. Most people think that all the sprinkler heads go off at once, it's just a fallacy. It only goes, only the fire part that's covered by the sprinklers would go off to put out the fire. The odds of a person dying in a fully sprinkled property are nearly 0%. I say nearly 0% because the instances that people have died where the sprinkler, buildings protected by sprinklers, the person was usually the part of the fire. So for whatever reason, he was killed that way or killed himself. Sprinklers significantly reduce the risk to firefighters, which is obviously very important to us also. Hundred firefighters die a year, 100,000 are injured. Sprinkler buildings can virtually help eliminate all that problem. The moratorium was proposed in an effort to bring smaller-type businesses into the downtown area, okay? We've talked about this a little bit. And it really only applies to this downtown B1 district, the moratorium. Protecting an area like the downtown district against fire is best accomplished through automatic sprinklers. Again, I feel, again, really important to emphasize that. We don't want to downplay the fact that if we can get buildings sprinkled, you're going to protect the whole downtown district that much better. According to NFPA, at least two-thirds of all reported structure fires occur in non-sprinkled properties, so you have a very good chance of having a fire if your building is not protected by sprinklers. Current moratorium does have exceptions that still require some occupants to be triggered. Existing operated businesses are not retroactively required to put sprinklers in. I really think this is important, we get phone calls quite often about this. If you're operating your business and nothing changes, there's no retroactivity in our current ordinance to require that property to be sprinkled. There are triggers that might require it, but there's no, keep doing what you're doing. No sprinklers. The existing triggers to these, and I think you're a little bit familiar with these, are any new building over 2,500 square feet. Obviously, if you build a building, you're going to put sprinkler system in there. Restaurants or assemblies with occupant loads over 50. If you recall, when Neat Kitchen came in here, that was an issue with them. That was one of the triggers. They wanted to open up a business that had that over 50, so that triggered the sprinkler requirement, regardless of the moratorium in that district. Any additions that increase the property over 2,500 square feet, duplex with dwelling units attached, that's triggered upon construction of new building, and any new multifamily dwelling with three or more units. Almost all the multifamily units in Westmont are protected by fire alarms right now. If you build a new multifamily unit, though, it has to be protected by sprinkler systems. And then proposed is a mixed use for mixed-use occupancy. Of concern are the occupancies where you have a storefront, and then up above you have living quarters. There's a real good possibility for fatality where you have these mixed uses, where a business is below and there's people living above. They have absolutely no control over what's going on in that business downstairs. These are the types of constructions that would trigger the sprinkler requirement. Removing or relocating walls, removing or relocation of a door or window, or substantial changes to plumbing or electrical systems. Upgrading just electrical service wasn't, no intent to trigger the sprinklers. redecorating such as painting and new carpet flooring did not trigger the sprinkler ordinance. Keep in mind that this was the part of the moratorium that was eliminated, so if the business wanted to move in there, they could do these minor repairs to this business and still not trigger the sprinkler ordinance. In regard to the sprinkler moratorium, our recommendation is to have 100% of businesses multifamily or mixed-use properties protected by fire alarms by June 2013. So that's no different than the path we're already on. That's already in the books, it exists, the deadline is coming up for June 2013. And would pursue compliance through normal fire prevention protocols. I would mention there's grants available, I know through the village, some of it can be applied for life safety systems. There's potential TIF funding. Phased installation should always be considered. We have done that with other businesses for fire alarm systems. And as a last resort, perhaps consider what's called a consent agreement, which pretty much puts the liability away from the village onto the business owner. Again, just like the fire alarm system, we recommend keeping the wireless ordinance intact for a deadline on June 2013. I don't see anything bad about the wireless requirement. It's been nothing but good but for the fire department, as well as the community for response. And again, just like the fire alarm systems, pursue compliance through our normal protocol. In regard to the moratorium for the downtown district, the board can consider variances when board believes the economic impact outweighs the life safety issues on a case-by-case basis. You've already done that, less than a month ago, with the Neat Kitchen. If the board decides to extend sprinkler to moratorium in the B1 district, the recommendation is, extension is only feasible if all these properties are protected then by fire alarm systems. So if we're going to say we're not going to sprinkle it, and again, sprinklers are important, then we need to recognize the need for at least early detection, which a fire alarm offers us. And keep these exceptions in the moratorium intact and add mixed-use provision. So like I said, add that mixed-use provision, so if something, as far as triggers a mixed-use building, then that requires it to have a sprinkler system put in there. And then set a new sunset date of not, no more than three years out from whenever you decide. This is my contact information. If anyone has any questions about, please feel free to call me or send an email to me.
We're entertained. Any questions that the board may have now, or the public or the business people would be more than happy to answer those?
I'd like to hear from the public first.
Yeah. Anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? Thank you. If you would just state your name?
Yeah, Tammy Kiram from the Humidora 225 East Ogden. Thank you for hearing this. I definitely think the importance of fire safety. My house burned down as a teenager, so I personally know the importance of the fire department and prevention is key. I just want to share our experience as a business owner, where we stand with ours. When we came into the village and we're so happy to be here, we took that property, and we obviously had some major renovation that had to go on, which triggered the sprinklers needed. So we put the sprinkler system in, we spent over $40,000 actually on the sprinkler system. We did the $6,000 permit with the village, $10,000 payment to get, you know, we had to build out, we put a water main in on the corner of our building so that we could hit Ogden. Well, with the mapping that was given to the company, when they actually dug out to get there, there was utilities in front of that water main, they couldn't access it. So we had to close everything up. So as it stands, we've spent, you know, almost $60,000 really, when it's all said and done, with, when you had to do with construction and stuff, to have our sprinklers put in, because we did, out of good faith, knew that that's what we had to do. We weren't looking for any exception or anything. And now we're looking at a case that we have to go to Blackhawk, which is going to, and we don't even know how we're going to do it, because we have a water main that's on the other corner of our building, which, so we don't even know how much we're going to have to dig up and what the cost that would incur on all of that. So these are cases that I think the village needs to consider or to think about. I know business-to-business, there are differences, and I know that was talked about in this plan, that sometimes, you know, each business needs to look at things, but, I mean, again, in good faith, we definitely know the importance of fire safety, we appreciate the fire department, know the importance of it, and I personally know, you know, what can happen. But I just want to share with our, you know, what our, as a business, you know, what has, you know, what we've had to incur with the sprinkler system. And in this climate, too, it definitely is really difficult, and thinking that we're going to have to spend out $60,000 more is just really unfathomable. I just want to share that. Do you have any questions for me with our sprinkler system or anything?
You do have, you do have an actual fire alarm system in place.
Oh, yeah, we, we're all up to code on everything. We actually even, like our ceiling, they asked for special spray. We actually even like our ceiling, they asked for special spray when we did our wood panel in our ceiling. We went to code with that. We just recently had to put carpeting into one of our newer lounges and we went up to fire code, you know, with that carpeting. We always try to stay, you know, up, we have heat detectors too, because obviously we are a smoking facility and everything, and we definitely want to stay up to code and we appreciate the village and the fire department and preventions and for people's safety.
Okay. Where at this point in time, if I may ask, matter of fact, I may have to ask Director May to step into the room if he could. This is a public, this is a Public Works question.
Sure.
With the issues that she's having up there on that corner, are there any solutions or is this something that we're going to be facing in other sections up there also that may have to do this or comply with these things?
Well, I, I recognize the issue and it was, it's been some time ago, right?
Yeah, we did it immediately when we first, and we didn't know that Blackhawk was going to get dug up either. We would have like reconfigured our lounges had we known Blackhawk was being dug up when we started construction of our building. You know, we could have timed it, that we could have opened that up at the same time, but we weren't aware that that was happening, which, you know, our fault too, that we weren't in the village noticing things, you know.
And the added complication is Ogden Avenue is a, you know, an IDOT jurisdiction, so there was a, you know, complication with, you know, digging in there right of way too. The utility conflicts weren't known until they had the hole open and the advantage that they have, even though it doesn't sound like any of it's an advantage, is that they're on a corner and they do have access to another water main, so it's, they're, you know, this isn't an obstacle for them, but it is on the other side of Blackhawk Drive, so now they have to tunnel underneath Blackhawk. And then whatever plumbing configuration in the building, all changes too. So, and that's, that could, you know, not just on Ogden Avenue, I mean, that could reoccur anywhere. I mean, in the downtown, there was, you know, some people that are on the corners have had the ability to, you know, tap off the side as opposed to going into Cass Avenue. But, you know, it's only-
The only, the only reason I'm asking this is, I mean, if, I guess my question is, prior to the digging towards Ogden Avenue, I mean, are we aware of the fact as a village of any of these situations before they start digging into the ground up there or whatever? I mean, be it, be it this business owner, anybody, what may be there that they may have to get through to get to that main?
No, the, anywhere in town, we don't have good as-built information for any other utility. They maintain their own stuff. And in fact, when you, you could probably go one lot down and there might be a difference in height and they're not in conflict anymore. In an example like Ogden Avenue, there's so much stuff packed in the small parkways that it's all just very dense and there's a lot of different types of utilities trying to access that. In different right of ways through the town, things are more spaced out. You can go above or below or, but to, the only way, I mean, even with our own projects, you, you excavate and you vertically locate all the utilities in the design phase before you, you know, before you do construction. So it's, but, you know, that's a full-size construction project that's kind of burdensome for any property owner.
So Steve, didn't Julie know or was able to locate those?
You know where they're at horizontally. I mean, you, you know where they're located, the marks within two feet, but left and right. So you don't know how deep they are, and if they're at the same height, then that's where you run into your connection problems.
And that's where you came into a problem.
Okay. If it's wires and cables are easy to adjust in the hole while you're doing it, if it's a gas main or a large diameter, anything else pipe, then one of the other has to be rebuilt. Or you go over the top of it and now the service is too shallow and you've got water temperature problems, you know, in the winter. Lot of factors.
I guess the kind of question that I have to ask at this point in time, where do we stand with this particular business owner?
I'm not familiar with it.
So I think maybe we might want to take a look at this.
Is your question, where we stand terms of enforcement?
Well, I mean, as to where we're, as to where we're standing, if there's some guidelines that the fire department may have set out, giving them a date as to when they have to get this put into place?
I was involved with the initial build out of this. The sprinkler design encompasses all parts of it, from the underground through the actual supply of the sprinkler system itself. There were a little bit of difficulty with, initially with Ogden. With the construction of Blackhawk, there was a prime opportunity to hook into the sprinkler system. My predecessor, for whatever reason, allowed some time to lengthen before this was hooked in. The, the building's been there for about, you've been there for about four years now, right?
Four years, yeah.
Okay. So I, all along, they, they've always knew that it had to be hooked in. We're in, that's one of the worst situations you can be in, where you have a sprinkler system installed in a building that doesn't have any water in it. If there is a fire there, there's going to be a lot of answering to do, a lot. So, you know, we, we started at the beginning of this year, one of our goals was to say, you know what, we, we got to get this sprinkled. The property just to the west of it, the strip mall, just installed their main in there and they're a newly sprinkled property on Ogden. So one of our goals is to get it. I mean, it's kind of been, it'll be five years by then to 2013.
And all of our intention was to, like he was saying, the difficulty, when we did the construction, we didn't know that Blackhawk was going to be tore up. And so when we, we did our, you know, with our architect, we put on Ogden and we put the main right there for, to get into our building. So we don't even know how to dig. I mean, we're, the whole store would have to be tore up is basically what we're looking at, you know? We just don't even know what, I mean, we had, it's just kind of mind-blowing for us at this point, you know, as to what we could do. So.
I don't know what to tell you at this point. I mean, it's just, try to figure out with the, between the Public Works and the fire department and utilities companies and try to... Chief, you got any ideas?
We'll work with her. We'll get up there and we'll see what we can do with contacting these individual people that we need to and we'll, we'll work with her and we have to phase it in, we're phasing in whatever we have to do.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Anybody else from the public? We know you.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank the board. I know a lot of us have had a lot of dialogue on this throughout. I'd really like to thank Chief Weiss. Chief Weiss has gone-
Excuse me, Harold, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We know you, but the people watching might not-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I am, I am the landlord and owner-occupier of 13 West Naperville Road. I'm Harold Berry III. My company is Berry Aluminum, again, which I am owner-operator of and rent there at 13 West Naperville Road.
Thank you.
To Chief Weiss, Chief Weiss has been nothing but admirable on every step, every question I've had. I've got a return phone call. I have not had this always with village employees, and I tell you, this is a great hire and I look forward to working with him in the future. With that said, I strongly disagree with the fire alarm aspect of it. My hope is that we could get some type of grandfathering, some type of trigger system on the fire alarm, much like was described to us on the sprinkler. Whereas if we did an addition, we did an enclosure, we did something to trigger this fire alarm, we could then budget for it in our loan or however we were doing that addition or whatever it would be at that point. I, I saw the concern in your eyes of Trustee Emery and Fleming and Seneca when we talked about this 10% down on the budget. And, and I know that everyone is feeling that now and how difficult that is. Well, you can imagine, some of us are 150% down in our businesses. When you talk 10%, I'd say I'd take that today. I, I would hope for 10% back from where we were in 2009 where this was passed. This then poses a problem. A lot of us are, and I think you're going to hear this repetitive day, we're, we don't know what to do. Again, I bought that building in 2006 at the height of the market. Today, I'm probably like a lot of people, I'm probably underwater on that. To keep putting more and more money into it, you know, I'm kind of at that crossroads. Do I, do I chalk up my losses? Do I pull that downtown business out of there, rent it as a residential? Because my home is, it was a home that was converted over, and then just go rent from Zigman or something like that? I don't know if that's the best opportunity. It's never good to move a business and, and I don't want to do that. When, when we moved there in 1986, I was a freshman in high school and Westmont loved having us down there. They were so accepting to us. They were glad that somebody converted that house over. Today, we don't find that same playing field. I know I'm non-conforming as far as sales tax and things like that, but I'm there and I have a big investment. And as I say, I'm probably underwater on it where I couldn't even sell it today. These are my pleads. I would hope that the board could show mercy and somehow come up with a grandfathering or, as originally was proposed, one of these trigger items, whereas if we did an addition or, or got a new service or enclosed a window or a door, at that point, we would again budget for that alarm. I'm very excited to have Neat Kitchen coming. That business, in my opinion, is, is a much greater fire risk than myself. I noticed that that variance was granted to them as a new business coming in. So I was hoping, as a longstanding business, that I could either get this variance on the alarm or possibly have it set off to another day. You know, my, my wish is to have it gone altogether, but, but I, I can't see where, where this is going to be affordable in the next couple of years. I really can't. And, and you know, we've had this discussion before. This has already extended one time. So that's where I'm at with it. And I know we've had these discussions, you know, on and off. And again, Chief Weiss, I, I agree with what they're saying. It's definitely a, a safety help. But I think if all of us looked at our personal lives and if we looked at the train station and everything else, we could improve so many safety things around here. I haven't seen a rash of fires in downtown Westmont. We have one of the best fire departments in all the area. I would hope we could move forward with some of us being grandfathered in. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Just one point of clarification with Neat. They received a variance for sprinklers, but not for the alarm.
Correct. I'm aware of that. But again-
So they were fire-
There was also people that would have purchased that building, you know, that had they known that, most of us were told, you know, people that ever looked at that building were told they would have to sprinkle that building to do anything with it. And so I know that some of the people aren't here tonight, but they're very disappointed that that, because really that was what our understanding was. So again, I know they're two different, the sprinkler, but then again, I look at my business as being a far less, I mean, I have a girl in there 30 hours a week and I have myself, far less of a fire risk than a kitchen and so forth that we've waived a sprinkler system on. So those are my concerns. Again, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
And thank you for introducing yourself.
Very good. Thanks.
Anybody else? Any other business owners, residents?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Peter Horneck and I'm president-owner of Arkell Plumbing. We're at 206 North Cass Avenue. I apologize, I kind of came from a job, so just to be here to listen. And again, just like Barry said, I, I agree totally. I mean, it's a situation, we don't argue any facts about the danger of fire and it's, and our fire department is wonderful and the really only fire I ever remember was in the 70s, kind of next door here, the old, it was a triest, the dance place, and I was three or four years old. But it's a situation too, where when this first came on, it couldn't have come at a worse time. 2009 is when everything started struggling. We've kind of been waiting. I know they had programs for people who jumped onto it to find when they kind of might turn, when we might have the funds to, to put into this. And it's, unfortunately, those times would never come. So we're, we're struggling to, every single dollar is, is going to pay our guys and to keep, keep afloat and keep, keep a successful business in town. And, and that's where we run into a little bit of, you know, it's new technology with the wireless monitoring before. I know with the wired calls, there might have been some, you know, false alarms, things like that, but obviously it's new technologies come on. For new businesses that start up or you move in, it's easy to adapt to that. But again, back to the point of grandfathering, it's something that, you know, we've run the way we've run, but the wireless, it's a new technology. It's something that's good for, if you can count on it, you can take a loan to it, you can build it into your business. So that's a little bit of concern. And we're also talking about how fires will destroy a business and, and put a business out of, out of business. It'll board up the, the building and so forth. But with the economy bad as it is, unfortunately, you see it up and down all the way to 63rd and so forth, business are going under because there are so many other regulations they're trying to stay afloat. And every dollar, be it $60 a month, $70 a month in the monitoring, the initial cost of several thousand dollars to, to upgrade everything, that, that's where our concern comes in. It's something that if, if we had the funds, we had the money, we would, we would love to do it today, because, because everyone wants to be safe. And as a part of the community also, it's something that we've always, you know, we want to stay here. We want to work in town. We've, you know, Westmont is, is, is Westmont. It's got its charm. You know, we're here, it's, it's not a Hinsdale, it's not a Naperville, and I don't want it to be like that. I want it to be like Westmont. So that's kind of what I'm looking at too, is just some, some kind of either grandfathering in or even a, you know, delay of the time. Because again, if it was in the mid 90s, late 90s, when things were booming for everybody or not for most people, it's, it's just a really hard time. And that's kind of what, you know, we're kind of reiterating a little bit what Barry had to say. And I know, you can see most of the downtowns, 49% of the businesses are just kind of waiting, I think, not because, oh, we don't want to do this because it's silly. We don't want to do it because we don't have the money to do it. So that's our concern.
Question for you. Do you own your building?
Ah, yes, we do.
Okay. Because I know some people are in situations where they're tenants, where the building owners are expecting them to do the compliance, so that's why I do-
Yeah, we do own the building. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on this? Dr. Truffle?
Yes. Hi, everyone. I'm Robert Truffle. I've been in Westmont for now, will be 31 years come April, and knock on wood, I haven't needed you guys at all. I'm by myself in a little brick building. And when this first brought, was brought up to me, I'm going, you know, I know I'm at the end of the race. I'm jogging home now, I'm going to be 63. And I'm going, you know, we're going to spend, what, $2.50 a foot? Now, does that count for the basement too, or is that just the upper structure? So say we got five or six grand in it. I call my insurance company, they say, okay, we'll give you about $200 a year off for your insurance. Oh, big deal. We're going to spend five or six grand at least for that and there's more costs besides $55 a month. We got somebody to inspect it every year? Is that true too? What is that? There's a lot of hidden costs that don't seem to get, you know, it's always a lot worse. It's like opening up that tooth and now you've got real problems, right? Well, anyway, I kind of like the idea of some sort of a grandfather thing, or if you do something like Harold says, you do a repair or remodeling or something, boom, then activate it. I'm one of the 88 home or businesses that don't have anything, but I'm by myself. And if it, if it happens, I guess I would be, I'd, I'd sign an agreement that holds the village harmless. So if it came to that, where it's about some litigation problem, I'd be happy to sign anything that says, hey, if there's a fire and I go down, so be it. That's my attitude. Anyway, thanks for your time.
There's no real liability risk to the village of failing to enforce a sprinkler ordinance or a fire alarm ordinance. And I've researched that issue specifically for the Northern Illinois Home Builders Association, and I don't think there's any merit to it.
I have one more quick question. The guy next to me passed away a few years ago. His wife is no longer even in the building. His building is a B1 buffer just like mine. How are you guys going to enforce that ordinance on somebody who's not even there? Has anybody thought of that? What goes on there?
Oh, there are ways.
Are we just going to be penalized?
Oh, there's ways.
All right. What's going to happen there?
We'll figure it out.
Anybody else from the public or a business owner?
My name is Dave Zlachak. I'm a resident.
I'm not a business owner, I'm a resident. I have a small knowledge of fire alarms and sprinklers. And I will tell you that fire alarms are a must, in businesses and in homes. Sprinklers are a plus, fire alarms are a must. 10 years ago, approximately, I built my house. I was one of the first houses in Westmont to be sprinkled. The ease at the house, and I know the cost of what a business is to house, but for a fire alarm, you would make your residents, and you would make your patrons and all that more circuit, safety insecure of it. I would lay that, a lot of people that go into the restaurants and that, that don't even have the fire, they don't even know. They just assume. Everybody that walks into a building assumes that it has a fire alarm, because it's, 2013, you would think it would. Definitely, I would definitely say that on the fire alarm, it's a must for something like that. The sprinkler is a plus. And I would only hope that maybe, a couple of years down the line, I could stand up here and help you do a fight for residential sprinklers too, because to me, that's another must. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Hello, everyone. My name's Jim Reptis. I have the Sitco Station in Naperville and Cass. Nice thing about tonight, it's 30 years tonight, 3 o'clock this afternoon, I've owned that place. I'm glad to know that all these gentlemen are on the same page as I am. I didn't get to confer with a lot of them. It's not that we're against it. When you guys drew this thing up, things were good. Like they said, everything was fine. Things are not good anymore, people can't afford it. You have a lot of empty stores in town. And I says, well, we're going to find a way to get them people, this and that. You have empty stores. You do this, you're going to put a lot of other people out of business, because not be afford it, and then they have to fight you guys not to get it. You're going to have more empty stores. I don't think it's productive. The grandfathering thing is a good idea. I didn't think about that, when hearing it here was one thing. Or the trigger mechanism. You do some major remodeling, you rebuild the place, yes, but to take an old existing building, and some of these buildings are 100 and something years old. What are they going to find when they start drilling holes, and putting in pipes, or whatever? And how well is it going to look, these pipes hanging down, or whatever? It's not a new construction here, where it could look nice. Then you have other things, places that have food in them. What are they going to do when they install that stuff? What are they going to do with all the food, or the stuff they got up? It's going to take them a long time to install that. I just think it's something, as easy as it was voted in, I think it could be voted out, or grandfathered in. To put this kind of timelit on it, like you said, when things were good, yeah, we didn't have a problem with it. But things haven't been good, and we're just trying to survive. So I think you should all take into consideration, just like you guys are struggling to figure out what you're going to do to pay bills, or where are you going to cut, what you're going to do, so are we. But we got it 10 times worse. And it's not actually your pocket. So it's a little bit easier to make decisions, but it's when it's your own pocket, it's a lot harder to do. So I just wish you guys would all think about it, and maybe think twice about it, get rid of it, or grandfather it in. And like I said, I'm trying to be open-minded about it. When it's a new construction, yes, you figure it in, just like you said, you figure it into your loan, you figure it in, you can get that money. Now to come up with this money, just to cover this, it's fine, but it's not somebody that's paying for it, but us. So have more to say, but I think that'll cover it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Let's, oh, come on up.
With all due respect to the board here, and to the audience here, and my friend here, who was, Erv Kaplan, very polite. I just want to say that I'm listening to what's going on. I didn't come here to speak tonight, but I am a businessman in Westmont now for 42 years. There was a time when I wrote about $1,300,000 a year here in town, and we collected sales tax for that. Our customers come from all over, very few from Westmont. But I wouldn't leave Westmont if I could help. Volume has dropped from about $1,400,000 to $350,000. There's just no profit. There's no money anymore. My wife and I love working. I know it sounds silly, but however, we haven't taken a paycheck for five years. I work to pay rent, which should be paid. Pay utilities, heating, insurance, my accountant, electric. And we operate with furniture in the store, so you know, if I, this is interesting, I'm thinking, if I had a sprinkler system, I would really lose everything, and unfortunately, some of the building in the town. Because furniture can't take water. It can't take smoke. It certainly can't take fire. I have a landlord, and they're very nice. They were more than fair, and everyone has lived up to the terms. But it is an old building. The question I have, it hasn't totally come up yet, between me and the landlord, of who's responsible for the sprinkler system? The landlord for the building, or me for the store? However, in listening to everything, in all fairness, I feel that I should, I like this whole idea of a grandfather clause, and getting, you know, a little break on a sprinkling system, or a pass. But I'm listening, and I really think that my store should have some type of an alarm system. Something that would reach the fire department, because I would feel very bad, even thinking about it, if my negligence helped destroy this downtown. I don't care about the furniture, believe me, so help me God, heck with it. But I wouldn't want to be responsible for hurting this town. So I'm going to ask, and I don't know who's going to respond, but I'm going to ask that someone come in and talk to us about the lease cost to put up some kind of an alarm system, that being permissible, and somehow letting the fire department know somehow that there is a fire. I would sleep better, you would sleep better. I did not come to speak tonight, but I thank you for indulging me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erv.
Is there anybody else?
I'm Bill Carlson, from the Uptown Tavern, 12 West Burlington. And I know that bought the fire at Chain Food and Liquors, Triest, that was back in the 70s. I was working in town here. In fact, Triest burned down in 78. It was an electrical fire. They think it was an insurance job. I mean, that's two fires that happened in downtown in a business over 30 years ago. I don't see why I have to spend all this money, when there's been two fires, as long as I've been working in town. One, I think, was set, you know, that was least scuttlebutt going around back then in the 70s. I, you know, it's just, I agree totally that it should be grandfathered. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, with that, we will open it up to the board discussion.
Where do we want to start?
I'll start.
Well, I mean, the first thing I'm going to say, I think most of you in this room know that my wife has a business in the downtown. I know how tough things are. I know what the yearly inspection is, and the cost of inspecting the fire alarm system. I know what the monthly cost is for the monitoring. It's not easy. Trust me. Your testing of it alone, probably around $160 is what it costs, having come in and test it, and make sure that it works, and everything goes where it's supposed to go. Granted, yes, we started to take a downturn in 2009. I lost my job in 2009, because I'm in the construction field. And I've been fighting and struggling ever since that point in time. I understand shortness of funds. I understand how tough it is to keep a household going. Trust me. I now work two jobs, and I'm looking for a third, just to keep what I have. This was put in place in 2009, with an ending date of 2013. That's four years. To plan for this. Even though things are really tough, I really appreciate that, I really do. But in planning a budget, regardless of what the business is, of how it is, I think it's something that needs to be taken into consideration when you're running a business. Now, we're not saying that we're going to require sprinklers in the downtown. I think where, part of this is being misunderstood, is the fact that what we're looking to have done is fire and smoke. We're not saying that you have to put sprinklers in your buildings. That's not what we're saying. I think going forward, the plan is very simply, as everyone probably knows also, that we are looking to possibly put a TIF overlay in the B1 district downtown. That generates several things. I think going forward, as far as dollars and cents go, let's say a landlord downtown wants to tear one of these buildings down, comes down, new one goes up, yeah, it's going to be sprinkled. There's no two ways about it. That's the way it needs to be. We are one of the few towns, I think, in the surrounding area, that do not require sprinkling in our downtown district. Now, this goes two ways. Yes, we have an old downtown district, you bet. We've got some old buildings down there, and they're brick and mortar, and timber under structure, holding up the floors. Not saying you're going to sprinkle the building, but if you're going to rehab the building, you ought to at least go to the point of putting some type of a monitoring system in if a fire goes up. The other thing you have to remember, no matter how good your fire department is, it can be the best there is in the world, but I guarantee you, they'll do their best. You get a fire started mid-block in this town, they'll do everything they can to salvage it, but I guarantee you, that baby's going to jump in either direction. So whatever building is in the middle of the block, or whatever building is in another block, that doesn't have some kind of a system to notify, that gives the time of the fire to increase its capacity, so it crawls from one building to another. And the way a lot of these buildings are designed, with the basements in them, there's not really a stopgap in a lot of them. So that means your fire's going to go under floor, it's going to go over the top. Take one. Like I said, I've been in the construction field for a long, long time. And some of the worst things that have ever happened, as far as fires go, is in older districts. They can contain it as best they can, but I think the biggest thing of what happened with us, honestly, and I believe this, that if we had a fire in mid-block downtown, you might as well kiss the block goodbye. I'm not sure they could really stop it. I'm sure that they could get to it as quick as they could, but I think the damage that you're looking at is going to be more extensive. To the question of grandfathering, Westmont is a very quaint little town. It has been. It's surrounded by larger towns that have enacted things, that have increased their revenue, have increased their foot traffic, have increased their business. And it's been done because they have become progressive. And I use the word progressive, because that's what we use in our village motto, progressive. We're going to be progressive, and unfortunately, we have to make the decision sometimes, it's not going to make everybody happy. I'm sorry. I really am. But when it comes to health and safety, or fire and safety, I mean, this is something that has been in play for four years. Budgeting is tough. Budgeting is tough for everybody. But at this point in time, I can't, I can't see not requesting that these fire and smokes go in to the buildings. I just, in that district, I mean, as far as, I'm village-wide, I mean, it's, to me, it's a no-brainer. I'm sorry. But, I mean, that's just the way I feel about it. And I mean, as far as any redevelopment goes, it's automatically going to trigger that scenario. So, I mean, I, that's my take on it.
As far as the, I mean, I agree. We're not saying everybody's got a sprinkle. We're looking at extending the sprinkler moratorium with the TIF-ing to downtown, and we know the problems with the small water main, that's only on one side of the street. And the very real possibility that after the TIF goes in, that despite how unpopular it may be, my hope is that a bunch of these buildings come down. They're tinderboxes, they're outdated in a lot of ways, that would, for them to be rebuilt and look quaint, would be cheaper than remodeling them, to keep them in some workable fashion. When people stand up and say, you know, we haven't seen a rash of fires, or these were fires 30 years ago, all we need is one. And with, you know, party walls, or joint proximity, you not only, if you have a fire in it, there's no alarm, and it begins to grow, you not only are going to lose your business, but you are going to destroy the hope and dream and life savings of people who were unfortunate enough to have placed their business next to yours. And I understand all of the budgetary reasons, and I understand the money. But one of the other things is, none of us would ever say, because of budget reasons, to Chief Mulhern, you know what? When's the last time somebody took a direct hit at your chest? You and the guys, you know, why are we paying for bulletproof vests?
Good and elegant.
I haven't seen a rash of them. Why are we buying them? Because all we need is one. So on the other hand, to sit there and say, yeah, we've got a great fire department, and if one starts and there's no fire alarm, our fired, fighting personnel, they don't walk in, around in the comparable of a bulletproof vest. I mean, we don't soak them down 24 hours a day to protect them. What I regard as saying, well, I want to save, you know, $5,000 or $6,000 by not putting in a fire alarm, I take that as a personal affront, and a willingness to further jeopardize our fire personnel. And I'm not willing to go along with that. I'm just not. Because all we need is one. A lot of us go every year to the Hundred Club Dinner, where, you know, the death of firemen is lauded and honored, and all that. I don't want to see any from Westmont there, because, you know, somebody said, hey, you know, I don't want to spend $5,000 bucks. I'm not willing to go there. And I don't care how unpopular that is, but I'm not. We've got guys that work hard, and I'm not going to take their bulletproof vests away from them, that hang up on a ceiling in a building. And when you say, you know, if you do this, well, we're not going to be able to afford it, and you're going to lose business in Westmont, I talk to business owners all the time. And as far as I'm concerned, to not require a fire alarm system in a downtown building, the way that our B1 district is set up, when I stop practicing law, I would like to open a yarn shop. I live in Westmont, I love Westmont, that's why I ran for the board. Do you think I'm going to go into downtown Westmont and risk all the capital and my life savings, in a town that says, well, we're not going to require that it be a fire alarm, something simple as a fire alarm? Why would anyone put their life savings into a mom-and-pop business, in a building that is not equipped to notify the fire department of a fire? Why would somebody come into this town, when we would allow that? You know, what is the attraction to new businesses? Your whole dream can go up in smoke? That is not an attraction to any town. And when we talk to towns all over, they go, why, you guys, what? I'm not willing to do it. Period. I am willing, on the sprinkler system, there's all kinds of problems with that physically, because the age of the infrastructure. And I understand that. Simple alarm systems, no. Not going to do it.
Well, Erv, you didn't want to get up and say anything, but you did.
I agree with her.
You did.
She's not talking to me.
One of the issues that I keep hearing from the different businesses, is that there's such a variable of cost on the systems. You can talk to four different companies, and they're going to give you four different prices. I was talking to somebody just the other day, and they were saying that, it seemed the closer they got to the deadline, the higher the price went up. Because they knew they were under the gun. So whether that's true or not, but it just seems that that could be a possibility. I like the way, Erv was talking about, trying to find the cheapest system, or the cheapest way of doing it, getting the results, but finding the cheapest way to do it. And if you're getting prices of $5,000, and you're getting prices of $16,000, we've got to find out, you know, are they being taken advantage of? And is there a better system that's out there that can do the same thing? Some of them is, you know, maybe we should tie it into the TIF, as in, if there's going to be redevelopment, and some of these places are going to get knocked down, redeveloped, whatever it is, at that point, let her trigger it then. Because why put money into it, if it's going to be totally changed anyhow? So there's variables, I think there's ways of doing it. We worked things out with the school district, and we got, everybody's happy. I think we can do the same thing down here, we just have to do it. We've got a whole new outlook on how to do things in the downtown. We're looking at a TIF district, which I think the community, the village itself, is trying to be friendlier than what we've appeared to be, than what people have thought we've been. We're sitting there, seeing that the businesses are not only stressed, they're, some of them are in dire straits, we need to survive, we're going to try to help you do that. And if you guys can work with us, you know, there's going to be a give and take. I don't think the village is going to get everything they want, and I don't think you guys are going to get everything you want. But if we can find a happy ground to make this thing work, and with the chief's help, and with the chief's help, I mean, that's what I would like to see. I wanna see, of course, I'd like to see everything sprinkled too. I mean, that's just, it'd be goofy not to. But can't be afforded. And to find something for the alarm systems, there's gotta be Plan C. There's gotta be just another way of doing it, and are we seeing it? To get the same result at a cheaper cost for the businessman. Take it out another couple of years to give them time to sit here and say, "Okay." Chief comes back and says, "All right, here, we did find Plan C. You guys know that it's gonna be maybe a two-year or whatever time difference if we do, able to get it stretched out. You know that. You're here tonight or whenever it's gonna be to know that. It has to be worked into the system." Then when you come back and you say, "I didn't do it," well then, sorry. At that point, everybody was given an opportunity to try with a fresh start, but I wanna see this thing work, but it's gotta be, I don't wanna see you lose any businesses over it.
No.
But I thought we talked about that four years ago, about, you know, here's a four-year moratorium on it, it's coming, you got four years to plan for it.
I'm in business, 30-some years. It's the worst it's ever been. You know, from 15 years ago, we're probably down 60%. And I'm glad it's only 60%. So, things have changed in four years, and that's one of the issues. It's just, you know, absolutely, I think if everybody could afford it four years ago, they'd have done it. They didn't be able to pay for it then. But things got worse, and you've got payroll, you've got insurance costs, you've got gas, I mean, everything else went up. And so, I think we have to be receptive to those issues.
But when you say Plan C, are you actually saying that as a village or a fire department, we should go out and try to find a company that can do this? When does it become government's responsibility to find someone to install these things?
I'm not, I don't know what the answer is. I don't know what Plan C is, because we're just talking about it for the first time tonight.
We've talked about it for four years.
But there's gotta be, well, we haven't had everybody sitting here.
Right.
And we haven't heard their input like we have tonight.
Yes, we have.
We've had this many people sitting here before?
We've heard it maybe not in the public venue, but we have heard it. Okay? We have. And I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate it. I wish, I wish there would be a magic wand that we could wave and make everything happy. I really do. I really do.
Then where do you suggest they get the, where do you suggest they get the money if business is continually, continuing to go down?
Do we waive their business license fees? I haven't seen that on the table to help.
That's maybe Plan C. I don't know.
You know, okay, 88% of this town is in compliance with the smoke heat and the alarms. 88%.
When did that happen, though?
Well, who knows? Maybe the chief has that answer.
Did that 88% happen when it was good times, when people were making money?
The B1 is 51% compliant. I'm gonna guess that some of that 51% went out on a limb, took a second mortgage, borrowed from whatever they had to do. It was hard, but they complied. I'm not willing to just grandfather and say, "You never have to do this." I would be willing to consider more time, given this economic state. But, you know, we've got businesses that went out on a limb, businesses like Irv Kaplan that don't wanna, you know, they don't wanna contribute to a problem, you know, because of their business, and that wasn't easy for them. You know, they had to come up with the money in the same conditions of all of these businesses. So, to grandfather, no, absolutely not. Everybody at some point has to have smoke heat and it has to be alarmed. Time? We've got time. I think we can work with these businesses, come up with something reasonable, and come up with the time that's needed. I mean, and I don't know if that's Plan C, but I agree with--
Well, it's better what's out there now.
I agree with Trustee Scott. It's like, we need to find a way to make this work for everybody. Because they're not exactly knocking on the doors to bring businesses to Cass Avenue. And I would like to--
That may happen when the tiff comes around.
Oh, they'll--
And we have to have everything in place, is what we do.
Right.
But we'd also like to see the ones that we have here stay.
We wanna retain.
Right.
You know, retention is as important, if not more, in some ways, on new business.
I'm pulling a Rubio right now, excuse me.
Yeah. Was that your Rubio?
Yeah.
That's my two cents. Anybody else?
I'd have to agree with you guys. I think the fire alarm and smoke alarm is a must. I think, as all you business owners out there, I'm a business owner as well, and I wanna protect my business, and I think that's very important to protect it. I understand all the criteria with the sprinklers and all the different issues, and I think that's something completely separate that needs to be addressed, and something that we should be flexible with, because the costs are crazy. Let's face it, they're crazy. But the smoke alarm, the fire alarm, I really think that's important, not only to the whole downtown area, but just to the community.
In general.
In general, exactly. And, you know, it's almost to me like the cost of doing business, kinda. It's one of those things. And I know it stinks, it's expensive. I mean, I hate paying my LLC every year, I don't like paying my liability insurance, I don't like paying for my alarm insurance, or my alarm. But I do it because I wanna protect my business. And granted, I run it out of my home, and I have all the paperwork out of my home, so it's a lot less expensive than doing one in a retail establishment. But the alarm that's in our warehouse that we pay for to secure all our goods is definitely worth it, because if I lost all that, the cost of losing all that far outweighs the cost of that alarm system. And I couldn't survive if all my inventory was wiped out, because, you know, we're a startup company, six years and running, we started from nothing, and to lose everything would be catastrophic. So, I mean, if I was in the downtown, I would be trying to figure out a way to do it to protect myself, protect my business. And I think there's gotta be some way we could figure that out.
Trustee Fleming made a comment, and he said, "Is it government's business to try to get this?" Well, I'm not quite sure that's the answer. I don't know if it's Chamber's, you know, obligation to try to help, but maybe step one is to try to find group, to try to do it as a group, as to get, you know, quantity buying.
That's what--
Because we're getting so many different variables here. If we could sit there and say, you know, get a company that would sit there and say, "This is gonna be your recommended vendor," but what are you gonna do, or, you know, farm it out to sit there and say, "Bid it out." What's gonna be the best deal for these people? And if we give it all to one guy, does that--
Okay.
Give him the best, give him a better price, I don't know.
But then the other part of that is, very simply, maybe we can, maybe we can put that information together, okay? But there are those people out there, if we then say, and go to these business owners, "Here, this is who we're suggesting you use for this because of the price," and they'll do it as a umbrella thing, well, then you're gonna get the ones out there that are gonna say, "Well, what's the village getting out of this?"
And you answer and say nothing.
Well, and that's fine, but why do you wanna answer that? I think the best scenario that could happen, we let the professionals that know how to do it, that are sitting right here in the front row, I'm sure they have plenty of contacts of different firms and that, that are very well-qualified. Get a selection of a list, because I'm sure in all your years and the departments that you deal with, a list of maybe five, okay? Five that are qualified to do it. Then, maybe send a short letter out and say, "Look, this is how many businesses we have that this needs to be done to. If you were to bid it as a group, what would your cost be?" Or if you bid it separately.
Chief, what have you done so far? Has anything been like that, where you've done a recommendation?
They give out a list currently. They currently give out a list when they do that.
We have a list that we hand out to the business owners. We're not in the business to try to recommend a certain individual alarm company, because we don't wanna get into that. We have no ties with any of them. We have opinions about them. We know which ones do the most business. We know the ones that are probably the most reasonable and that are the cheapest, but we leave it up to the building owner or the business owner to do that. And, you know, to answer some of your questions, I have Larry come up and talk a little bit about, when we mentioned about having a phase-in, he's gonna talk to you a little bit about what a phase-in, you know, program is, and it's a little at a time, at a little cost out at a time over a certain period. So, Larry.
You know, just, if I could just make one more comment, and I won't speak for the fire department, but I'm going to. It would seem to me, I mean, we know time is of the essence. You know, if there's heat, and there's smoke, and there's a fire, and that alarm goes off, you're gonna get there a lot faster than if I'm sitting at a freight train at 10 o'clock at night and see smoke coming out of a building. It's just a fact of life. And in those two scenarios, when you're there faster, it's safer for you as a firefighter. If you have to get up on that roof, you can do it. If you're there late, I don't want your risk in your life getting up there, and I would assume that no firefighter would. I mean, it just--
No, but they do it because that's what they're trained to do.
They're trained to do it. But if the fire is engulfed to a point where it's no longer safe--
I agree.
Then, you know, it's just too risky. It's just, I--
But if it was a business with a--
Doesn't make sense to me.
A mixed use, and it was a business with an apartment above, the firefighters would risk their lives to go up there to try.
Well, for saving a life, of course, but an empty building? Let it burn. Don't risk your life.
What do you suggest as far as extending this out? How long?
Can I make a, just throw out an idea?
Yep.
You know, we could work with the Chamber, downtown Westmont Business Alliance, or whatever, you know, collective group that would want to participate, and provide the, I guess, the technical expertise to go out and prepare an RFP or an RFQ, and look for a set of, you know, the best price. And they wouldn't be obligated to use these folks, but I know just in some of the conversations that I've heard, some of the feedback I've heard from the business owners, there is a wide variety in the pricing they've gotten. Maybe if we do that, we would get more consistent pricing, and maybe the pricing would be lower. I just went over briefly, asked the village attorney if that's something we could do. We wouldn't contractually be obligating anybody to use the program, but we could at least identify potential vendors that, you know, the fire department would feel comfortable with.
Somehow like standardize the pricing or something?
I mean, it's a much larger scale, of course, but our homeowners association does that. You need a roof, you call, they give you the name of, you know, three or four guys, they talk to them, you know?
I always get nervous, you know, when we do questions where people ask for recommendations, and we wouldn't be recommending folks--
Not a recommendation, no.
But we would be using the power of numbers, maybe, to get some good pricing and say, you know, "These people have offered this pricing, you're not obligated to use them." You can go, you know, hire whoever you want to, as long as they have the proper licenses and certifications. I don't know if that would help or not. It's just an idea.
You haven't heard from Trustee Clevino.
Sorry.
That's okay, she's--
Yeah.
I've been listening.
You're not dodging.
No. I'm not, I don't mind giving out a list and say, "These are what the people say their prices are," and leave it at that, and leave it to the businesses. I don't feel we should have any more go at it, because we start putting ourselves in as a middle person. But the businesses that came to the podium have been here for a while, so they've known and they've been told about our four years. I would consider a slight extension if needed to get their heads back, because I know the economy's been bad. But I'm, and I definitely would not be pushing sprinklers, especially in certain areas where the plumbing is just not gonna work. And I think a lot of it is our responsibility with the tiff to get that in properly, so they can eventually tap in. But I wouldn't give much, very long of an extension, because they have had four years, and I don't see things getting better, but like anything else, you know, when you plan vacations, when you plan anything, you go plan to get that iPhone, you plan anything, you start working on your budget, and this should have been slowly worked out during the years, and that they've known it's coming. My concern is the people who have during these last four years have gone that extra step and made sure they put the monitors in, the alarms in and stuff. They went and did it because they knew it was coming, and to push off too long gives them like, "Well, gee, I could have waited another two or three years. I didn't have to push myself. I didn't have to give up this vacation or give up this thing."
Or I overextended myself with additional loan.
Or a loan or whatever it took. And I've gotta consider that, that people did take it seriously. And they did go for it. And so, you know, I, but I also know the economy being so bad, I wouldn't mind a short extension to help the people. But we've gotta stop, because it's not just their building, you know? Maybe the economy's so bad, maybe they'd love their building to burn and get their insurance. I'm worried about the people next to them, who want their business and are trying to protect their business, you know? And I feel bad for those folks who may be the victims of somebody's fire who, you know, happened. I would be more devastated, not on my property, but as Irv said, the properties around, who might get damaged, or whether it's water damage or smoke and fire damage, you know, and they got hurt. So, you know, we can work, as you call it, a Plan C, to see how far the fire department or, you know, feels the extension needs. We have a big percentage in the town that have done it, but a smaller percentage in the central. And I think maybe a lot of it is because they were worried about the sprinkling portion. Maybe if we tell them we're concentrating on the alarm system, period, right now, maybe it'll help relax and find a way of getting it through. We've gotta protect the businesses. Even if it's gonna be a building in four years or five years, it might be torn down. It's the buildings next to it too, and the lives we have to save. And the firemen, and if I'm wrong, let me know, but the firemen, their first priority is if they think somebody's in the building--
Of course.
--they will go in the building. But if they know nobody's in the building, then their priority is to attack in a different way, so that they're not injured. And, but I think the businesses knew it was coming, and I feel bad, but I think it's gotta be done, not too long.
Larry, could you talk about the phased-in program?
First of all, I'd like to address Mr. Scott's comment about the variance in prices. Over the years, that's been very typical, and what it really is, is you can appreciate as a businessperson, some of these companies are really, really busy, and some of them are not very busy at all. And the ones that are really, really busy sometimes will quote out the job high, and if they get it, they'll subcontract the businesses that don't have it. So, we find these wide discrepancies, and sometimes there's much as 200% differences for the same, same thing, for the same equipment. There's really no difference between any of it, the technology's the same.
Sounds like they need to be regulated.
Well, they are regulated--
Sounds like roofers.
--in their license, but you don't regulate price. I mean, right? They're regulated for standard.
That's the way installation companies work.
Sure, yes.
That's the way it works.
We've successfully done this in a number of businesses, and I think a good Plan C is a phased-in installation. And a phased-in installation, and some of the companies will do this, you have to shop for it, is where you put in part of the alarm system now, and then you put in some more of the alarm system in four months, and then you finish the alarm system over the course of 12 months. The benefit to that is, is we're working towards compliance. There's a movement towards it. And the companies that allow this, it's a spread out, you pay for that part of the system, then you pay for the second part, and then the third part. I think that that's a good Plan C. This group purchasing thing fundamentally is, a fire alarm system is not a commodity. If I'm in a homeowners association and I need a re-roof, and 20 units need a re-roof, a petroleum product like roofing shingles could be bought at mass quantity at a reduced price. The biggest part of the cost of the fire alarm system is labor, and then the second largest price of the fire alarm system is the panel. Most of these companies, they make their money on the service, not the equipment being sold. So, you're not gonna find, I think, that big, and it's a double-edged sword. The companies that right now give the best prices are the small companies. They can't quote out the big jobs. So, you have to remember, even if you took the whole downtown area and said, "Wow, we're gonna get all these fire alarm systems," it doesn't really represent as much of a fire alarm system as perhaps like Westmont Yard by itself would have represented, and that was still a significant investment. So, that's just our opinion.
Phased-in lease seems like it's a possibility.
I'm sorry?
The phased-in lease seems like it's a possibility.
Well, all these companies offer leasing. They definitely--
No, no, not the phased-in.
Oh, yeah.
The phased-in.
Definitely. Definitely.
Leasing's not a bad thing you brought up either.
They are, almost all the fire alarm companies offer leasing equipment. But then it's not yours, which is not the end of the world.
It's also a write-off at that point, too. I mean, it's a write-off anyhow, but--
Yep. I'm a fireman, not a tenant.
Yeah, yeah. But it's discussion that we're having, that is trying to come up with another solution.
Exactly.
Well, my concern on the phased-in is that if you do one portion by a certain date and another portion by a certain date, you do run the risk of like obsolescence on the first portion by the time the second portion's supposed to go in, or, and will that affect the price overall if the company's gotta come back three times?
Our experience, first of all, the technology does change, but typically, especially for the size of what we're talking about in this B1 district, the systems have stayed predominantly the same over the last number of years. The phased installation wouldn't be over the course of a decade, it'd be over the course of maybe 24 months at maximum. It'd be over the course of maybe 24 months at a maximum. And it, you just don't see the equipment changing that, that fast.
Okay. Not like iPhones.
Yeah.
Yeah, like iPhones.
Well, what's everybody else think about it, then?
Well, the only thing I can think of as far as a phased-in scenario goes, depending on how fast everything goes, what then if you have, have somebody that goes with a phased-in situation and they get partway through it and everything goes into place downtown and somebody says buys the building, gone.
No, then he doesn't finish the phasing.
Yeah.
But then that's money.
But-
It's less money expended, too.
Well, I mean, that's-
He's done X number of phases.
Less money for the new guy, too.
Yeah. Selling tool.
I'm sure if that person's happy someone's bought the building, that's going to be a drop in the bucket compared to anything else.
Okay with the phase in.
Does that mean, then, we have to have inspections to make sure everyone's met their phase?
Believe it or not, all the scenarios have played out over the course of five years. Phased-in installations where the business owner said, well, I thought I was done by starting it. We do inspections anyway, so that's not a problem. Phased installations where the property is sold, well, the person buying it is glad because they're partway to compliance because they have to comply anyway. All of these things, it, it doesn't, it's not a problem. It can all be handled.
Larry, what's the realistic number of phases?
The realistic number of phases, maximum of three over the course of 12 months, maximum.
No, I mean, is it six phases? Is it three phases?
Three. And the reason I say that is predominantly your biggest cost upfront is your, is getting in your fire alarm panel. So put in your fire alarm panel with manual activation and then start running and some notification and then perhaps finish up with your detection. These buildings, again, not to downplay them, their size is so small, the phase is going to seem like kind of mundane.
Well, is phase one the bulk of the cost?
It's, it depends on how the person does it. Again, a smaller comp building can use a less sophisticated fire alarm system. But a short answer to your question is that might represent at least 30 to 40% of the initial cost, yeah.
And I think our biggest concern, if I'm understanding it, is downtown B1, not the overall, you know, the last of the businesses on the 88 percentile, but the, but the 49% in the downtown. And those are our little, you know, shotgun, shotgun-type buildings. Well, what's realistic from a, from a time?
Well, the moratorium ends in June 2013. What we're hearing from the fire department is a phase in, in most considerations, is 12 months. You have until 20, June-
June of 2014 is actually 16 months.
So, right. I mean, you're looking at 16 months if you go from this point now to June 2014. Not splitting the difference.
This is just for fire and smoke.
It's not, it's not, just fire and smokes.
Yeah, this isn't sprinklers. I think sprinklers, we are not even discussing. We are talking fire alarm.
Sprinklers are off the table unless it's major rehab or-
Brand-new building.
Brand-new building. I mean, that's not a problem.
None of what just happened.
I mean, you know, in, in talking to public works also in 12-inch main downtown, it can handle the pressure that would need to be. It's just a question of getting underneath the street for the buildings on the other side. So the sprinkling scenario right now, as a whole, is not a economical solution. But if a new building comes in down there, yeah, it is. Not going to, I don't, I don't think we can budge on that. If you, if you want to do the phase in, I mean, that's fine. I understand the cost. I understand what it costs to operate a business. A lot of us in this room do. And, but if we enact, if we enact that now, goes into, say if it goes into effect immediately, within the next set of meetings or whatever, then you've got until the end of June, then you've got till the end of June of 2014 to get this accomplished in a phase-in scenario.
Well, I think that with, you know, realistically, 16 months, you know, it's in the blink of an eye. I mean, here we are, four years later. I remember this discussion last time because Corinne was right in the front row and had a lot to say. And Dr. Cole was here and all of that. So 16 months is going to go very quickly. My proposal is for 16 months, I don't even think phasing is a, you know, that's telling somebody that in, you know, four months you're going to have to have this done and a 30 to 40% of it and all that. With a 16-month window, I don't even think it needs to be phased.
The whole thing?
Well, you could leave that up to the business owner if they want to phase it.
That's up to them to do, like Sue says, because this way they could have contracted with them to do it in three payments.
They can phase it.
They can make it easier.
On the other hand, because we're going to TIF the downtown and that's going to be done, you know, within the next short timeframe. And there may be people who, we don't know what's going to happen with development and they may come in and say, you know, we want this billings and we're going to do, you know, this with it. And so these business owners will make the decision about selling and will not have expended extra money that will be torn down. My proposal is 24 months from now with no phasing. 24 months, drop dead date. That gives about 18 months of TIF in place, developers being advised that there is a TIF in place. Very different from our, our, our south-end TIF. We're not looking for big boxes on Cass Avenue. We are looking for developers to come in with specific projects. So I think 24 months from now gives a good feel for what's going to happen with downtown and with a clear mandate that, you know, if you don't want to expend anything and budget it, you're going to get hit at the end. You're going to have to put it in in 24 months, 100%. And that's your choice as a business owner to phase it yourself or not. And, you know, you decide what works for you. But that's, that's my proposal.
What's the penalty if it isn't done in that 24 months? John?
Well, that's something the chief raised with me, that there should be a penalty provision in the ordinance right now.
What have we got now anyhow? Let's say-
It's a default that any violation of an ordinance is subject to this general penalty provision of up to, I think it's $750 per day for each violation. And then it's up to the court to determine, how much is that violation worth? How much are you really going to fine? I've seen courts hand down tremendous amounts of fine when a case drags on for six-plus months and they hit the owner up with that daily fine. Seen other courts back off that, so.
Where it would have been cheaper just to put the system in?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
I, I would recommend, what, what the chief recommended is make that clear in this section that a failure to comply is a violation of this ordinance and will result in a fine of blank number of dollars per day for each day of the violation. If it doesn't have teeth like that, it's a-
Yeah, it doesn't mean anything.
Well, if it doesn't have teeth like that, we'll be having this discussion in two years.
I just want to make a, if my memory, back four years ago in June of 2009, when we talked about this topic. This topic was talked, the reason we're talking about it because it came up from two years before. So this is actually six years we've been talking about this, this topic.
It's like our second extension, I think.
It's the second extension. So I just want to make sure that's clear. It's not four years. It's actually six. I, I understand your 24 months. I'll work with the board. I'll work with-
Well, you think six, yeah, I don't have to.
Don't have, would you withdraw that question, please?
I withdraw that.
So, but we're willing to work with it, but, you know, we're getting to the point where we, we need to move on. We need to work towards that 100% compliance and-
And I don't think if the economy had taken a dump, this wouldn't have been that big of an issue. If everybody was working and people were making money like they were six, eight years ago, you know, this wouldn't be that, that bad. But you've got an issue that's happened that I think we have to realize. And, and part of it is if we're going to enforce something or we want to have a law on the books, we have to have some way or some mechanism to help them obey by it.
Yeah, I agree with the-
Agreed.
And the other thing is, is, you know, and I understand the, the chief's frustration. The other thing is we may find developers, say, because of the long moratorium, they're not going to, they don't want to tear down one of those buildings and build another one when next door's a tinderbox. It may bite us from right back and bite us.
Even if it is TIF overnight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a catch 22, boys and girls. But I mean, I, I even kind of, yeah, it's been six years. Two more years is eight years.
It's a long time.
It'll just drag slower and slower and slower.
All right, why don't we, what about 18 months? What about 12 months? Well, or 16 is the, from now till June of-
One extension from the-
From June of 13, that's 16 months. I'm okay with that, too, because, I mean, if I had my druthers, I would drop the hammer. But I understand that that is not productive from many standpoints.
Based on what I said to begin with, I'm willing to, I'm willing to go out to June 2014 at this point.
I think that's a fair compromise.
I mean, initially it was, yeah, pound this hammer home, done.
With no phases, it's a drop-dead date.
Well, the phases are up to them.
Yeah, they could phase it.
No, but we're-
Not for us. No, 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 not for us. That's up to them. Right, right.
Alls we're, alls we're saying is at this point in time, the end of June 2014.
7:50 a day after that.
Came over. That will be seven and a half years. Long time. That's still less than what it took to fence up at the Oakwood Homeowners Association.
Yeah, that's-
Still less time.
Well-
That was only, that was only about 12 years.
Had to remind you about that, didn't you?
Yeah.
Or longer.
I remember that well.
But not so much a life safety issue.
No.
No, no, no.
Okay, John, you got all that?
Well, I, I know the sprinkler moratorium is out there, so that needs to be extended for a set period of time.
Well, I think, I think that, yeah, three years. But I think, but I think the thing is with the sprinkler moratorium, though, it has to be made very, very clear. It needs to be very concise. If major rehab is done in a building, which would consist of moving walls-
Which is in, it's in the order.
Whatever, but if a building comes, if a building comes down, one's done in a district, that's it.
Yep.
It's got to go in. It's already done. I think, I just need confirmation. How long is it getting extended? Because I believe that's up in June also, correct?
Yeah, I think three years on sprinklers.
I think that's reasonable.
Three years.
Okay, and then I've got till June, whatever the date is, 2014 for the smoke heat alarms.
Right. In the, in the situation where a business might opt to phase, will we still conduct inspections at each point of their phase? Or will we just do inspection at completion?
Typically, when there's a phase, a phase installation, the fire alarm company calls the plan reviewer, who we do in-house, to make sure that's okay.
Okay.
Because it's not really recognized in the code. It's kind of the intent of the code.
Okay.
And, and then we agree upon an installation inspection. So yes, as, as the process goes along, we inspect it.
Okay.
So the board also needs to consider a wireless timeframe, too.
Absolutely.
Chief, your memorandum talks about everything being due June 213 and expiring June 213. Are these, do you know what it is on the books? Is it June 1st or June 30th?
I believe it's the first.
I thought it was the first.
So we push it, we push it to the end of June.
Like a June 30th? Because we want to, we want to keep a, whatever it is.
Right.
If it's the first, maybe we'll consider pushing it, but-
Because I think maybe part of the thought process was that, in my case, I thought it was the end of June.
I reviewed the-
I could be wrong, but I think if we can adjust it.
That works. June 30th.
So do you want this on the agenda for Tuesday for a vote, then?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Right now it's on for discussion only, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we'll take it for a vote because-
I think we beat this one up.
There's not enough time left in our-
No.
-agenda to put it on for next time, again.
John, I want to make sure that you notice, too, that we're also recommending to add to the sprinkler ordinance to mixed occupancy. Mixed-use occupancies.
Yep.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, everyone, for coming in and thank you for your input.
And thank you to the gentleman who sat here through everything, prepared to answer questions.
Yes, thank you.
We appreciate your being here.
All of our guests that were ready to answer questions.
We had a lot of experts here and everyone had to get up.
Experts were not called upon.
We still got more to go, but you're-
Let me ask her.
Am I sure?
Yeah, I don't care.
No, from John.
Okay. We'll just give a couple of seconds here for the room to clear and then we will have our esteemed Public Works Director. I think we all brought them, but I can just bring them again. Oh, oh, oh. Okay, we will continue on.
Can we kick our executive session to Tuesday?
Great idea.
We got the food.
Huh? What, am I smiling? No.
Okay, we will go ahead and continue on. Engineering Services Agreement Burns and McDonald. McDonald, sorry. Board to Consider An Ordinance Approving A Proposal From Burns and McDonald For The Phase Two Engineering Design Services For The Wilmett Avenue Reconstruction Project, MFT Number 12-00101-00-PV.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As stated, this is just the engineering design services for the project. The project itself is Wilmett Avenue reconstruction and it is the piece from 55th Street to 56th that does not have curb and gutter now. Is the only section of that, of Willmet Avenue from 55th all the way down to 60th that is not fully improved. The, you recall the one portion of the, this project was originally anticipated to be part of the design when they did the 55th Street improvements for how it matched up there, but then the scope of the work on 55th changed and these engineering services were never done as part of that project. It was still budgeted, it was just that we'd be using a different engineer, it would be the county engineer. So the improvements would include the curb and gutter and all aspects of the right-of-way. It'll include public sidewalk and street lighting and with that, it'll also include the street lighting that was never installed all the way down to 59th Street, that's not included, too. So that's the scope of the project, we're not bidding out any construction in this budget year, but we do have the engineering services budgeted for currently. So this is just the design to get a set of plans and to get us a better estimate for construction purposes, for budget purposes.
Great.
No questions, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Engineering services agreement Strand Associates. Board to consider an ordinance approving an agreement from Strand Associates for Phase Two engineering design for the Jamestown Oakwood subdivision detention basin repair project.
This similarly is also engineering design services only. The detention basins, the Oakwood subdivision, Unit 3 at the very north end up by 35th Street, there's, there are several detention basins that service the Oakwood subdivision. Obviously, Lake Charles, there's the pond behind the high school property and then the two ponds on, at the very north end at the two Jamestown called the Sacks. If you're familiar with it, on the one side, there is a significant drainage issue in there to where it's kind of turned into a, well, we've planted it with wetland plantings because of the problem with the bottom of the basin and the overreaching issue is the actual outlet for that pipe is a tile that drains out onto 35th Street, which is 100% in Oakbrook's jurisdiction. So these design services are not only looking for opportunities on how to remodel the basin, but it's primarily to do a design for the outlet pipe and do a connection all the way into the system that's in Tartan Lakes where it naturally drains. Right now, it comes out to the surface and drains over land through a ditch and it's all part of what backs everything up and keeps it in the condition it is.
So that doesn't attach to Tartan Lakes at all?
Well, not, not with a rigid pipe.
Okay.
It actually comes out of the system again and then runs over land and then into the Tartan Lake.
So it flows into their waterway there.
Yes, but there, that's the natural direction it is downstream and this would continue that, too. It's just that we would make a better connection and get positive drainage down there. We don't have the, you know, we can't get in there, you know it's all heavily wooded and it's very difficult to get to the one structure that's in there, even just to clean it and do jetting.
What about Tartan Lakes? Do they have to be approval of this or they don't have any say-so?
It's, well, their system is encapsulated by design in a detention easement, so we have a right to do it. It's not that we wouldn't coordinate with them, but they won't see the, I mean, there'll be construction, but they won't see the difference. Everything would be restored in the state it is and they won't notice, you know, the change.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing under miscellaneous. With that, we will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of reviewing and accepting-
Some more. Second.
Executive session minutes. Roll call, please.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebino.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Did I get you?
Yes. No, yes.
Her pro dim sinica.
Yes, thank you.